Call to order at 7:09. Charlie, could you please read the district mission statement?
Ipswich Public Schools aspires to empower all students to be global citizens who are effective communicators, analytical problem solvers, and savvy consumers of information. We propose to do this through an emphasis on communication, critical thinking, creativity, self-management, perseverance, and collaboration. Students will be active partners in authentic learning, offering voice and choice in demonstrating competency.
All right. Announcements and special acknowledgements. First, the next school committee meeting should be held Thursday, February 6th at 7:00 PM here in the Ensemble Room. Any other announcements or special acknowledgements? Charlie, you got an award for swimming. Can you tell us about that?
I was, I've been on the swim team for four years. It's kind of a low team, so encourage your kids and friends to join the swim team. It's great. It's a lot of fun. I had a lot of fun. And yeah, that's about it.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Next, a public comment. Public comment is a discussion, debate, or dialogue between individuals in the school committee. It's an individual's opportunity to express an opinion on issues within the school committee's authority. While the committee and/or administrators will not typically respond during public comment, the chair, the presiding officer of the meeting, may choose to if she seems it expeditious. Further, should the chair believe that an issue falls outside the purview of the school committee, she may request that citizens direct it to the appropriate person or body so that the matter is given proper consideration. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person, a total of 30 minutes overall. This is the only opportunity during this meeting for members of the public to comment, and should you comment, please state your name and street. Come to the microphone up there if you'd like to speak.
Speak into the mic, I assume. Hi, I'm Kimberly Marroides. I live on Poplar Street, and I'm a Winthrop parent, and middle school parent, and a member of the Winthrop School Council. I'm not necessarily speaking on behalf of the council because I didn't touch base with everyone today, but am speaking for a few. I'm also speaking on behalf of some Winthrop families and some Doyon families. Last night, when our school council met, we were given the opportunity to preview a portion of what's going to be presented tonight. And in that preview, it was revealed that this budget will reflect the complete elimination of the world language program at the elementary level. So, this is a program that obviously is beloved by families, beloved by the kids. Not only does it allow for language acquisition at the age where research shows it should be done, which is very early, it also exposes our kids to a broader culture and allows them to see that other cultures exist in the world, in a place that can be limiting in that way. So that is all obvious. Everyone understands how wonderful the program is. But I think what has alarmed the families that I've spoken to is how quickly and rapidly an academic program can be removed from the schools, especially a program that touches nearly 100% of the elementary students. This is different from eliminating a staff position, yet the content is still delivered in a different way by a different staff member. The deletion of this position represents the full deletion of the program. And we were told that as of last week, the program was still in the budget, but the principals as a collective were asked to reduce that budget down cumulatively by another half a million dollars. And at that point, the decision was made to remove this from the budget. And if that is true and that is the timeline, it seems very quick. And it's alarming that potentially there aren't guardrails in place to prevent an academic subject from getting removed, whether that's in the context of the budget, which in this case, it seems it may be. What if now or in the future, it was because of a philosophical shift or political reasons that a group wanted to eliminate something from our curriculum? What is the process that allows for input to ensure that that is actually the decision that should be made on behalf of all kids? It is concerning that this is such a broad academic area that would be eliminated, and it felt like a surprise, and it felt like we're not giving the same amount of time to deleting a program that we consistently give to adding programs where, you know, there are committees that meet for multiple years, you're going out to other schools to examine other options. It's really a very thoughtful process. And so what I think would be helpful for the public to know is if there is a policy in place to facilitate the deletion of academic programs, and if so, what that policy is or is not. So Diana, maybe that's a question for you that you could weigh in on, and also like the timeline of the budgeting process and where this fits into that.
Thank you.
Next, we have the FY '26 budget presentation, and we welcome the administrative team.
All right. Good evening and welcome, everyone. It's my pleasure to present to you the FY '26 Ipswich Public School budget for your review and consideration. The budget before you represents a collaborative effort with the leadership team to meet the current and future needs of our students. I have to say, this was probably one of the most difficult budgets that I've ever had to put together. I want to start by thanking the administrative team for all of their collaboration and creative thinking as we put it together. A special shout-out to our new Director of Student Services, Dr. Eric Oxford, for his work on the Special Education and Student Services budget. He'll be presenting some important information on that area in just a little while. In preparing the budget, the team, the leadership team, met on several occasions with the Budget Subcommittee to discuss our programs, plans, budget concerns, and some of the major budget drivers that we have. Our administrators took a very close look at their own budgets and the changing dynamics of the buildings, and made budget proposals accordingly. The original budgets that were presented came in at about a 6.5% increase. After meeting with the leadership team over the last couple of weeks, and either cutting items from the budget or moving them to alternative funding sources, we're presenting a budget that's much lower with an increase of 4.29% this evening. Before we dig into the particulars, I want to talk a little bit about putting these budgets together. As I said, this was one of the, probably one of the most difficult budgets that we've had to put together. As I mentioned at the start, it's very challenging to build a budget with so many moving parts. Each year, the administrative team has to look at the current, their current programming, class schedules, class sizes, and the changing needs and interests of our student population. Every year, tough decisions have to be made, and this year was no different. We've eliminated some positions that we could not justify or maintain anymore, while adding others that will help us meet new standards dictated by the state, or expand programs that are working to make them stronger. We know that it upsets people to see programs that they've enjoyed go away, but we can't simply keep adding and adding programs and adding staff necessarily. We don't have the capacity for that in our, in our school day, frankly. You know, we, we have a wonderful FEFFES grant program, unique to Ipswich, that provides us wonderful opportunities. We, we can add things through the FEFFES program for a year or two, but many times it's hard to sustain those innovative efforts over time, because what starts out as an innovative project works its way into the budget, and then all of a sudden, the taxpayers need to support that. And there's a limit to what we can support. We're already fortunate that we have a wide variety of coursework and extracurricular activities that our students are able to, to access, much more than a lot of surrounding districts, frankly, for, for a district our size. But there are limits. In the coming years, educational funding is going to get increasingly tighter due to rising costs, increases in salaries, and the community's ability to pay through taxes. We're seeing our grant funding go down. We haven't heard this year, and I'll talk about it in a minute, but we haven't heard this year necessarily that our federal or state funding is going to go down, but we don't know. We don't know. So we've level funded that for next year. This is the first presentation of the budget this evening. We were making changes to this up until Monday afternoon, Tuesday morning, and it went to press yesterday. So what you're getting is literally hot off the presses. In the coming weeks, we'll be able to review those budgets in detail. We're doing the budget a little bit earlier, and we have our public hearing a little bit later, so that our public hearing on this budget isn't until February 27th, I think. So, once we're done with our work collectively, the school administrative team, my office, presenting this tonight, the school committee will take it over, make recommendations, work back and forth with the, the administrative team, and make a final recommendation to the FinCom, which will then eventually, it'll, that budget will eventually go to the, to the taxpayers at town meeting. So there's a lot of work ahead of us, a lot of opportunities for input. So, I think that, you know, we've, we've done what we can, and we're open to, we're open to suggestions. This evening, I'm, I'm going to present a high-level overview of the entire budget, the funding sources and budget drivers. I'll then turn it over to the leadership team to share a high-level overview of their own budgets and areas. We hope to do all the budgets, but if you want to stop in between the individual school or department budgets, and then we can ask some questions, but I, my, my hope is that we can get through this tonight. I think the, the original plan was to get through it tonight, and I want to tip my hat or hand, tip my hand, but I think we're probably not going to be in school tomorrow. So if that's the case, we may be canceling the meeting proposed for tomorrow night. But all the area districts are starting to cancel already. Don't dare text that out.
I'm so happy. That's great. That's great news.
So, so my hope is that we can get through all, all the budgets, at least the initial overview this evening, and then provide ample, in opportunity for input and, and questions later this evening. Again, I want to thank the leadership team for all the work that they put into developing their budgets, and for being here tonight to answer any questions. I also want to acknowledge our art department and our student artists for their contributions to the budget book this year. So, is that clear to everybody? I know it's, it's smaller font, but you guys have the presentation in front of you. Here's a high-level overview of our budget development this year. On the left are the major areas of the budget, including each school, facilities, special education, central office, et cetera. We included the FY '24 final budget, the FY '25 approved budget, and then the adjusted budget, after we received the additional state aid. The initial proposed budget this year, and what we're presenting as the superintendent's FY '26 proposed budget this evening, is over in the, the blue and green columns here. So this was the early budget, and this is what's actually being presented this evening, so you can see the differences there. Last year's budget was a 5.08% increase from the year before. This year's budget is coming in at 4.29% over FY '25. And you can see the adjustments in each of the schools, departments, and major programs. At, at the bottom of this slide, and on your, on your pages, you can see that we're requesting 1.72 million from the stabilization fund this year. And in doing so, we, we anticipate that we'll be able to still meet our, our, our promise, if you will, the guidance that we received from the FinCom on extending the, the override. So we, we should be within those parameters, given this budget. Here we can see that the number of FTEs contained in the budget at the top, so we are seeing an increase. That's all employees across the district, from food service to classroom teachers to central office, and everybody in between. We're looking to add seven FTEs in the budget. Sounds initially high, but we're going to talk through some of those changes, and, and how they're coming about, and what the budgetary implications actually are for them. There's a number of changes and reasons behind that that you'll hear during the presentations, including changes in our state standards, the changing needs of our students, and programmatic changes to better support our special education students within the district. The middle of the slide shows the total appropriated budget, and any supplemental appropriation the district received. You can see that this year's budget is a net increase over the prior year of $1,709,395 for that 4.29% increase. And then finally, at the bottom, you can see the funds that are coming from other, other sources to support the budget. And we show there FY '24, '25, and what we anticipate using in '26. As you can see, we have an increased reliance on the use of these funds to support our projected budget. And we haven't received any input regarding our federal funds, so you can see down here that we actually level funded those for, for next year. This comes right from the Massachusetts DESI, Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. This is our district profile for the '24, '25 school year. It shows a breakdown of selected populations, enrollment by race and ethnicity, and enrollment by gender. And the bottom shows our enrollment numbers overall, not including our out-of-district This is our enrollment numbers, these are our enrollment numbers going back to the 1920 school year, and our projected enrollment for next year. This includes all students. So as we can see, we have 1,589 students this year, and we're projecting 1,603 for As I mentioned earlier, we, we had seen a, a significant drop in our federal funding as the COVID funds expired, the ESAR funds. So as they were depleted, we saw a significant decrease in our, in our federal funds. We've level funded that for next year because we haven't received any word from, from the state or the feds as far as what our, our funding level will be. So best-case scenario was, was to just level fund that for next year. Looking at our school choice funds, our current cash balance in the choice fund is $1,578,323. As you can see, we're planning to utilize $495,000 in, in choice funds this coming year to offset just about the entire anticipated health insurance increase, which I'm going to talk about shortly. Our anticipated revenues to the choice fund for this coming year is $310,141. Looking at Circuit Breaker, so Circuit Breaker is, is funds that we expend in one year, and we get a, if we reach a certain cap, we receive a certain portion of that back from the state the following year for use. And so, the current net cash balance of our Circuit Breaker is 1.2, a little over 1.2 million dollars, not, it's not on that slide. $395,000 is planned for expenditure from Circuit Breaker for FY '25. It's based on the amount, on the expected FY '24 reimbursement amount. DESI reimbursement rate for FY '26 hasn't been determined, but for planning purposes, we, we, we put 75% reimbursement rate for, for '26, using our known sped, special education costs that are, that are deemed eligible. And we're, we're budgeting to access Circuit Breaker balance in FY '25, uh, '26 for $565,000. That'll be what's expended. The district has another significant driver, what we call fixed costs, and we separate out our health insurance from that. So excluding health insurance, in FY '26, we're budgeting these fixed costs at $2,607,400. That includes your retirement costs, Medicare, workers' compensation, unemployment insurances, sick leave, leave buyback, and all of these figures, I, I believe it's page 100 in your budget book. They're all listed there. Health insurance, big-ticket item, not just in Ipswich, but across the Commonwealth, across the country. We're seeing significant increases. We, initially, we're, we carried 10% in our budget, based on some early conversations that we had with town officials and Maya, who's our insurance provider. Then we heard it was going to be between 10 and 15, or 10 and 20%, so we changed our projections to carry 15, a 15% increase in the proposed budget. Now that 15% increase, we, we also added the 2% increase for the changes that are in some of the bargaining unit agreements, okay? Because we're going from a 65% reimburse, 65% share to a 67% share, so the district is picking up more of the health insurance, so we had to include that. So, I, late, late, late-breaking news, and I meant to say that three times, although we don't have hard numbers, we're hearing rumblings that Ipswich itself could be looking at an increase closer to the 20% range, based on usage. Now, we're still carrying the 15 because this was already in print. So, so we're carrying the, we're carrying the 15, but we may need to, to revisit that Special education expenses, the appropriated budget. This figure represents all of our special education services, including transportation. This shows a, an increase of $98,851 as an increase in special education. And Eric is going to talk more in-depth about the changes being made in, in that area in just a few minutes. And they're significant and exciting. And then finally, this slide represents the total compensation for all staff members in the district. So this includes steps and lanes for those on the, on the salary schedules. It includes stipends, it includes the administrative salary pool, and all non-bargaining unit employees. Of particular note this year was, was the, the number and the amount for lane changes, meaning people taking additional coursework, college graduate credits, online or, or in person, to, to move lanes, so to move across the salary schedule. And that alone, for F, for fiscal year '26, is $432,000 across the, across all, all of the, the, the people eligible for it. So it's a, it's a huge increase. We haven't seen an increase that significant in, in years past. It's been maybe half of that in years past. So that's essentially the, the big picture, if you will. At this point, I can either entertain any questions on any of those high-level things, and if there are, I will share the floor and/or the mic with, with Tom Markham or any of the other administrators who might be able to answer it. And Tom, is there, is, there's a, an up, this is, the, the health insurance slide is the updated slide, correct, as opposed to the book?
Yes. So, so the slide, if, if you're looking at, at the book as it was printed, it has a different number, and the expectation, what's in the, what's in the book is what we're going to actually be charging into the appropriated budget, as opposed to it being an offset cost. So I wanted the slides, at least as we were developing them, to be reflective of the ask that's in the budget itself. When Dr. Blake and I were going over the slides and sort of making sure that, you know, everything sort of worked, we felt that it was probably more, you know, more important to represent what the actual increase in the cost was, regardless of the source helping, uh, to pay for that. So what's in your book shows effectively, you know, level funding of, of the expenses related to health insurance, in terms of the cost of health insurance, and knowing that the difference between the FY '25 number and the FY '26 number, which is about $550,000, is all being expended or offset either by school choice or grants. So that's why there, there's a difference in those, in, in those columns. I wanted to obviously thank you, Brian, for, for pointing that out. And that's an important one also, and you'll see when, when Dr. Oxford speaks, while I still have the mic, I'll, I'll just give a slight preview. That will also be, be represented in the cost overall of the Special Education and Student Services budget, that actually, in the bottom line of what we're appro, what we're presenting to appropriate, to, to student services is actually going down, in terms of what we're asking the taxpayer to fund. The overall, there is an overall increase in the cost of student services, but in the same way that I just talked about for, for health insurance, that increase in the Special Education Student Services budget is being offset also by an increased reliance on, on revolving funds. In, in the special education case, we are, we are, we're recommending that we tap some tuition funds and the Circuit Breaker fund in a much higher way than we have in the past. So the costs continue to go up, but we're trying to really come in tightly on what we're, what we're appropriating into the budget and asking, asking the taxpayer to support. So we're trying to create sort of a sweet spot in between, you know, balancing those, those expectations.
I'm not an expert in how the district chooses its health insurance provider, but is there any alternatives or shopped around, or is it like a school district across the state are experiencing?
We're part of, we're, we're part of the, the group with the town, and there's a, there's a committee that meets every couple of years that looks at different health insurance plans and packages through our insurance providers, and they just did that this past year.
And then is what, this increase, is this what you're seeing in other districts? Is this what kind of is?
Yes. Yep. Yep. So Maya, the insurance carrier, or the insurance provider, has an annual meeting every year, and they set a range. And so in that range, they, the, the range is what they anticipate the increases will be. And... is what they anticipate the increases will be. And then they look at individual communities, and they look at what the usage is. And so if there's a high usage of the insurance, it leads to higher rates of the insurance. And so if you're, conversely, if your usage of the insurance is low, then your rates tend to be lower. And there's other factors in there. I don't think it's a pure calculation, but that's essentially the major drivers.
I can add to that question. You had said that the group that looks at the health insurance meets every few years.
Yep.
So does that mean that, at that point, you said it was this past year or this year, we're locked into this, with this company, or the town's locked into this company that provides health insurance?
They provide, they provide different companies. It's municipal insurance, I can't think of the acronym, but they offer different plans and different
Right.
Things. And the committee is made up of all of the bargaining units in town and representatives of administration from the different departments. And so they sit collectively and go over plans and, you know, high deductible, low deductible, all the different options that are available to us, and they collectively decide on what's going to be offered in the town.
Right. I guess my question is, do the rates change every year?
Yes.
So how come the group doesn't meet every year to then compare, to shop around? Is that the typical thing, is you meet every three years and you're locked into that provider?
That I don't know the answer to. Tom, if you can answer that?
Sure. The group, it's called the PEC, the Public Employee Committee. And the Public Employee Committee, as Dr. Blake said, is constituted under the auspice of the Town Manager's Office. And because we, as a school department, obviously have a department of the school, so we are on the same insurances that all town employees have. And this group does have the opportunity to meet every year and to go through what it believes would be the best interest of the employees that they represent. There is a fairly extensive process that the PEC would need to go through if they chose to change, you know, insurance companies. So MIA is, as Dr. Blake said, is our agent, if you will. I think it stands, it's M-I-I-A, Massachusetts Intergovernmental Insurance Agency. I think I got that one. That's what MIA stands for. And they represent a variety, a whole pool of different insurance companies. The PEC met over the course of years and have consistently chosen to stay with Blue Cross. So Blue Cross is the insurance agent that MIA reps for us. But certainly, we, the school department or the school committee, do not have any independent control over which insurance carriers all town employees will receive. I don't know if that was helpful, but.
No, that was additional information. That's good. Thank you, Tom.
Is there documentation of how they arrive at that, at Blue Cross as a vendor? Is that something that we could look at?
We probably could. I mean, so we don't sit on that committee. There's no one from the school administration that's a member of that committee. It's governed under the management of the Town Manager's Office, because it's a townwide, you know, entity, not a school-driven thing. But I could certainly ask and get whatever their documentation was for their process.
They don't have any representation on the PEC committee?
Well, we don't have, so our school, our union leadership sits on it.
Okay. Just want to make sure we have, we have a voice at the table.
Oh, and actually, oh, there is a voice. That's why it's called the PEC, Public Employee Committee. And there is actually a weighted vote, based on the number. So it's not every, every union doesn't get the same weight. It's the unions that have most representation at the table. So in fact, the teachers' union has the highest number of any town employees in their collective bargaining group. So they have a pretty strong voice at the table.
Does finance committee have a seat on there or something? Because I mean, I imagine if you're, you know, like a union or whatever, you'd want the best deal. That might not make the most sense financially, but you'd want the best package. Is there like a?
I honestly don't know the rest of the committees.
I don't believe so.
Okay. And then I know.
That might be an advisor, certainly.
Yeah. And then I know you said you don't know when the federal and state grant funding will be coming in, but like, what if there is a drop like there was in the last fiscal year? What, is there like an alternative? Do we take more from the school choice funds account or whatever?
We essentially cross that bridge when we come to it.
Okay.
Last year, we knew, when I made this presentation with the administrators, we knew that we were going to see a significant drop in Title I funding, so we were able to account for that and make changes in the budget. So we, by level funding it, we didn't have any other information to go forward this year. We haven't heard anything one way or the other.
I have a question about the, I think you said it was higher ed coursework, 432K increase there that was unexpected.
It wasn't completely unexpected. We just had a lot of people that had taken online or, you know, classroom courses, graduate-level courses. What's happened over time is that if anybody is taking CEUs or anything for their jobs, you can take a three-credit course for $300 now. And they vary in duration, and there's a syllabus and everything. And it's, we've had a number of people over the last year that have taken, or they've been working on it, I'll say for a couple of years, but this year they made that, they got up to the 30 credits to get to the next lane, or they got up to the 60 credits to get to the next lane. So we had a lot of people do that. And then we had, as a result of the bargaining unit contract, we had a number of people that actually, with the new grid and some of the negotiations, they moved actually two lanes over, based on their degrees. So there was significant increases there that we, as I said, I think we anticipate maybe half of that in other years.
Is there a process where they're giving you guys that information to say?
Yes. Yep. Yep.
To get some visibility.
So they have, if they anticipate a lane change for the following year, they have to let us know by January 15. And so just up until two weeks ago, folks were sending us emails. They send it to Laura, who does a lot of the course, does all of the course reimbursement paperwork, and then to Tom and I, to let us know that for budgetary purposes, and we keep a spreadsheet. And it's all in their bargaining unit contract.
So absent any staff departures, that's a pretty reliable number.
Is this a good time, appropriate time, to talk about, since the compensation for all staff was mentioned, about how it is decided, which programs will continue and which programs will not? Is this an appropriate, regarding the world language one, is this?
I think we can wait for the elementary presentations.
Okay. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. So just one other, one other statement that I failed to make at the beginning. Adam Mullin, the principal of the Paul F. Doyen Memorial School, is out with COVID. He tested positive this morning, unfortunately. So he was very upset that he wasn't going to be able to be here to actually present his budget, because he worked hard on it. So when it comes to his turn, we're actually going to zoom him in, and I'm just going to put my computer up here so he can do his budget presentation, because he was very upset that he couldn't do it on, you know, and be here to do it. So he'll be, he'll be ready when the time comes. Right now, I'd like to introduce Dr. Eric Oxford to talk us, talk to us about special education and student services. Eric?
Yeah, just at the spacebar, and it'll advance this one. All right?
Thanks.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. Dr. Blake, I appreciate the shout-out at the start, but I just want to thank, just take a moment to thank all my colleagues who are here tonight, in addition to so many more colleagues in our district for just welcoming me with open arms this year, and certainly bearing with my annoyance of asking hundreds, I think, of questions at this point, to get to know the district and just to, just to try to see what we can do to make some progress. So with that said, as Dr. Blake mentioned, see if I can get going here, I'm just going to walk through, again, high-level, just as Dr. Blake has, just some changes, points of progress with regard to our department, certainly as it pertains to budget. But, I mean, it was a decision of Dr. Blake and Tom for me to go first before the principals, really because there are a lot of changes that I think you may hear again in the principals' presentations tonight. But I think where the Department of Student Services is that through line within the district, I really wanted to provide, try to provide a little bit of more context and rationale before seeing things in isolation. So before diving into just the FY '26 budget updates and proposals, I just wanted to take a moment to share, and as I mentioned, my annoyance with asking lots and lots of questions. Really what has become of that is the culmination of a five-year improvement plan for our department, that we're in the final kind of draft stages. Myself, the program managers have really been the lead forces to put that together. We're near final stage to roll that out publicly and happy to come back at any point during the spring or in the fall next year to expand upon all of those things. But just wanted to take a moment to really ground the presentation, and again, more of the, some of the explanations you'll hear tonight from the principals around the four pillars of that five-year improvement plan, which is slated for FY '26 through FY ' '30, which is wild to say. So really, those four pillars, just very briefly, are, you know, number one is really to redefine and rebrand the department. As you're hearing already, I'm using the term Department of Student Services instead of Pupil Personnel Services. Frankly, pupil personnel is a bit outdated. Student Services is much more recognized and more relevant from the state level on down, and really with my colleagues within special education and civil rights and things of that nature. I haven't been in education for a ton, ton of time, but the last time I called a student a pupil was, I don't think ever. So, you know, and I think really from a semantic standpoint, too, and philosophically, you know, pupil personnel really defines this role, my role, as supporting the staff. And certainly, that is my number-one priority as I see it, but student services is just that little intricate shift in terms of really, we're here to support all students. And so we're working on that. And just, you know, as it pertains to rebranding and updating our website, Laura, I promised that final draft of the website update is coming soon and things of that nature. And another big task that we've looked to update this year are really our job descriptions. We have a lot of different personnel and positions in our department. A lot of the job descriptions within our district are outdated, and we really want to make sure, as we look to hire new staff for our district, for our community, that all those job descriptions represent our mission and our vision, you know, making sure that we are maximizing inclusion, we're making sure that we are looking at cultural responsiveness, multicultural competency, and attracting those employees, you know, to really represent, you know, our students from a staff level. So that's been a big task. It's been a big pillar for our department already, and that's already underway. The next two pillars are things that I'll really dovetail into in a few moments as it relates to our FY '26 budget priorities. But the first is really maximizing the efficiency and the calibration of our resources. I think efficiency and alignment have been the two themes for our department this year. The district, the department's in a fantastic place. I learned that really quickly over the summer. I'm really grateful to be here and to be able to see all the resources that provide the students with that world-class education, as we want to provide. But the biggest thing for us and for me is to maximize that efficiency so that we can work smarter and not harder all the time, so that we can make sure that our processes and procedures are set up in a way that, where time doesn't have to go by, that where our staff members, our colleagues are trying to figure out processes, we can align those, make those more efficient. We can make sure that we can order supplies that our staff needs more quickly so that they can get to work and work with our students. So I'll get into that in a moment, a few moments around kind of the higher-level, bigger-picture budget pieces there. Ensuring authentic opportunities for all students. I was blown away in such a positive way through my interview process, and as I jumped on board here in the summer, with regard to just, truly not just the district, but the community mindset and philosophy of inclusion and embracing all students. And I've met wholeheartedly aligned with my personal philosophy. As I've dug in a little bit more, I think, you know, one area that we're targeting, and I'll get into in a little bit, is what is that definition of inclusion? What is our philosophy of inclusion? And I think in a lot of ways, you know, a lot of, a lot of people, not just in Ipswich, think that inclusion means full inclusion at all times for every single student. And that's our ultimate goal. We know that if we're going to meet the needs of all students and really have, kind of have that universal design for learning approach, we have to make sure that we have those structural resources in the right place at the right times to make sure we can truly support all students. Dr. Brené Brown is, she's a well-known author, psychologist, and speaker, lecturer, and one of the things that I really abide by is her definition, or what she says, is the opposite of belonging is fitting in. And, you know, when we think about that sense of belonging, making sure all of our students feel as though they're members of the community, their school community, that's the opposite of fitting in. We don't want them to feel like they have to align into this one box. We want to make sure that all of our structures and resources can align to what their sense of belonging is. So a lot of shifts and things like that in terms of our budget structures and whatnot, that, again, I'll get to in a moment. And the last thing, I'm sure you've heard, last year and into this year, the state rolled out a new IEP. We have a lot of new kind of state mandates as it pertains to special education, and really, we want to continue to align those practices in terms of special education services, eligibility determination, so on and so forth. I am happy to report, the district is in a fantastic place comparative to a lot of neighboring districts. No knock on them at all, but I'm really confident and proud of the work that our department has done. So with that, again, I just wanted to introduce kind of our high-level five-year goals. But then we'll jump into the right side of this slide here that really prioritizes, you know, where we went in terms of our planning process for FY '26. And again, there's, sorry, there's a one here, that should be a three. There's three kind of overarching themes that have emerged, really from, since September, you know, which was really the time that we started to take a look at, you know, where can we go with regard to our department. As I mentioned, maximizing alignment and efficiency with district-wide department budget needs, and there's slides coming up that I'll dive in more. The second one, creating new programmatic structures to, one, establish equity, and then, two, again, maximize that philosophy and mindset of inclusion. And then the third piece is really taking a look at projected numbers, projected budget numbers as it pertains certainly to our out-of-district costs, tuition, and I'm sure you all know, transportation costs continue to skyrocket. That was certainly a huge hit after COVID and whatnot, that we really have to continue to take a look at. Special education, by definition, is a reactive department, right? If we had no students with disabilities, then we wouldn't have a department, right? So we always have to react to the students' needs. The one thing that I always challenge myself and my colleagues with is, how can we, as a department, be proactive in a reactive world? And so with that, I think it's so important for us to look out, you know, a few years and say, hey, what can we do to really make sure that we have that fiscal responsibility? And at the same time, make sure that we are working in the best interest of our students, which is why we're all here. So budget priority number one is, again, maximizing that alignment and efficiency of resources. I have said, I've been broken record to my colleagues this year, Ipswich is very unique in their budget lines as it pertains to special education. There are lines everywhere in the school-based budgets, or there have been, with regard to just certain positions. I'll give a couple of examples. We have a one physical therapist for our district. She's a 1.0 FTE. Her budget has been split historically, .35 at Doyon, .15 at Winthrop, et cetera, et cetera. As a best practice, as a matter of efficiency, we're going to plan to bring that, just that 1.0 position to the central budget. It's a district-wide position within special education. That's a simple kind of efficiency where we can make sure, just from a budget standpoint, we can maximize that accountability on our end and that responsibility. Another example, we contract out for an occupational therapist currently, we have historically. We have three certified occupational therapy assistants in our district as district employees, but we have a contracted occupational therapist. For this year, the projected amount for that contract, which is about 25 hours weekly, is that contracted occupational therapist, is costing us with summer services about $75,000. As we just dug into that and looked at with our program managers, what is that projected need for next year? what is that projected need for next year? It's going to hover around that 25, 26, 27 hours per week. And, but how nice would it be if we had our own occupational therapist in our district as a member of our school and district community at 32 and a half hours per week for the exact same rate, for about that $75,000, so that we can really be proactive with our systems, our structures, supports, our interventions? And that's an example where in a reactive world, we can be proactive. We can rely on that occupational therapist to provide some more whole group lessons and levels of instruction. So we can look at that tier-one universal instruction for all students instead of saying, "This position only lives in student services," excuse me, "special education for kids on IEPs." We can now say, hey, how can we make sure that our fine motor skills, that our sensory processing, you know, skills and development can really reach a wider net for students? So those are just a couple examples of us really digging into looking at, how can we be creative without impacting the budget with really just aligning our practices and centralizing some positions? Couple other examples, we're going to, we're just shifting our ESY, our summer services lines, to the central budget. Again, they've been sparsed out in all four different schools. As in doing that and looking at what the actual costs were versus the projected costs years prior, we were able to find some efficiencies. So again, it's, there's been a bit of an internal audit where we've just kind of taken a look and taken that zero-based budget approach and really saying, hey, what do we need from a budget standpoint in terms of projections? And from that, we were able to find some redundancies. We were able to find some efficiencies that we've been able to roll in to the district-wide FY26 proposed appropriated budget. And then a few other things, just more contracted services. For example, teachers of the visually impaired, our teachers that are deaf and hard-of-hearing populations, students who may currently be minimally verbal or non-verbal that require AAC assistive communication devices. We contract out with all those providers, which is appropriate. But again, from a budgetary standpoint, all those allocations are kind of sparse out at the school-based level right now. It just makes process really difficult. And to be candid, it doesn't, it doesn't, it's not a great look for us to delay sometimes our payments to those vendors and whatnot, which is no one's fault here in the district. It's just the system that's set up right now goes from central to the school, to central, to upstairs, and down the corner, and all around. So we're just, again, we're just trying to really be efficient so that we can make sure that our staff get the resources that they need that much quicker. Our second budget priority, this is probably been the biggest impact already in terms of, you know, planning and supporting, you know, more of our students in a proactive way as well as a reactive way frankly, and in terms of really needing to be as collaborative as we can be across the board. Look at to my right here, because it's really been an impact, elementary, middle, and high school. We all are aware of our mental health crisis in this, in this nation and, you know, and certainly here in Massachusetts and in this community. Our social, emotional, and therapeutic needs continue to be at the forefront of what we're looking at in terms of student support, student services. The feedback I've received certainly from my administrators, the student services department, our school adjustment counselors, school counselors, social workers, from day one was, hey, we need more. We need some more help here. We, and here's a data to prove it. And it was, it was very glaring. I remember going to Dr. Blake early on and saying, hey, we got to take a look at this, and he agreed. And so through that and through a lot of creative conversations and work, hard work, we've really been able to take a look at finding opportunities to build out some therapeutic structures within our, within our district at both elementary schools with the addition of school adjustment counselors. So we have had one school adjustment counselor at each elementary school. We are doubling that now to two. We are able to, we're going to, we are working at both middle and high school to create a structure for therapeutic specialists to support kiddos that really require that, require, excuse me, that more consistent therapeutic methodology and instructional approach throughout their day. So through all of that, there's a myriad of reasons why we want to be proactive here to support all of our students. Again, I talked about the philosophy of making sure, you know, we define and redefine inclusion as we need to. There's also a fiscal responsibility, you know, when we just kind of look at things, and I'll get to in my next slide, is that the highest number of our students who are currently out of district are categorized under the disability category of emotional. It's about a third of our students who are out of district right now. And of the students of concern at this point and throughout this school year, elementary up through high school, all the students that we are considering or have thought about, hey, is this the right placement? Do we have the appropriate supports for those students fall within that category? So there is a glaring need here in Ipswich to build up those therapeutic, social, emotional supports from a structural standpoint so that we can, one, make sure that the kiddos that need those services and supports have them. And two, so that we can be fiscally responsible in making sure that our out-of-district costs maintain and over time decrease. And I'll get into that in a moment. So this is just, that top part is just a snapshot of where we're going. You'll hear more about that with and from the principals about those changes. And again, happy tonight or at any time in the future to talk more about what those changes look like. The other investment we have taken a look at, this is another point of feedback that I heard early on, was the investment in an early childhood coordinator. So this position, as you see here, really provides leadership, oversight, professional development and training for all of our early childhood staff. We define early childhood as our pre-K program, so that's why this is under the category of programming. It's pre-K is our own program in itself, but really encapsulating, excuse me, our kindergarten there as well through the lens of special education. So this position will really oversee pre-K and K through that special education lens, serve as that liaison between Doian and Winthrop to align all of our practices, to maximize efficiency, to make sure that our pre-K and kindergarten screenings and registration and enrollment from central office to the schools are all happening in the appropriate way. There are a lot of Department of Education mandates at the pre-K level, as there should be, to make sure that from a child find standpoint, which is a federal mandate, to make sure that all students with disabilities are found and are provided with appropriate services, starting at age three and beyond, that we're doing that proactively. So one of the key features of this position is going to serve as a liaison with our early intervention agencies as well as our private preschools in the community to really have that, foster that more, more smooth transition to either our preschool or to our kindergarten here in Ipswich. So that's budget priority two in a nutshell. And the last one is just a chart, a little chart of money, of numbers. This is a snapshot of our five-year projection. And again, this is where I'm talking about trying to see where we can be proactive and it kind of ties together budget priorities one and two into three. And looking at our outcomes for our projected out-of-district costs. So as you see, our FY25 out-of-district costs are listed there at just about $2.6 million. As you see FY26 through FY30, if all stay, stay stable in terms of no other students going out of district, right? If we were to hold that constant, you'll see a significant decrease year after year in the total out-of-district tuition costs for our students. So where we have about 30, 31, 32% of our students who are out of district right now fall under that emotional category. We have another need for that, to build up that, those robust structures and whatnot. Those new positions, as I mentioned, in the budget priority two area, coupled with the fact that we have through graduation or aging out over the next five years, a significant decrease in students who are out of district. That is certainly, if we're able to work in this direction and be proactive in terms of having these social, emotional, therapeutic structures, is going to make sure that we can maintain and decrease this out-of-district tuition cost. So we know, there's always those unpredictables, right? We always understand, and it happens every year, that we have students, families that move into Ipswich, that their child may be out of district, right? Those are the unpredictables. There's always things that come up. So we're not, you know, I think it would be, you know, naive for me to say that, yeah, we'll get here, you know, FY30 with no other students ever going out of district. That's the goal though. That's where we're going to try to land. And that's the ultimate goal is for us to be proactive and be structured and robust in all of our programming. So with all of that, I just wanted to set the stage. I know that was a ton. And I'm here, I'm happy to ask and answer any other questions that you have. Again, whether it's now or in the future, but I just, I know it's a lot. There is, there had, had to have been a lot of creativity with regard to looking at, where can we go? How do we maximize efficiency and alignment? And there's a lot of quote-unquote intangibles around the processes that we are making, especially as it pertains to where our budget allocations land, you know, and instead of in the schools, being in the district. Because again, the pace of us being able to ensure that resources are provided and that we can have that proactive support for all of our staff at the school levels is just really going to make a huge difference. We're already starting to see that with regard to supporting our students, excuse me, our staff.
I was just wondering, for those other, you know, 68, 69% of students who are out of district, would it make sense to bring in a, you know, like you talked about hiring more adjustment counselors or therapists, would it make sense to hire another staff position to offset those costs? Or do they have needs that the district can't feasibly meet with a new position?
Yeah, it's a good question, you know, and I think, you know, to be, to be frank, you know, I think that there are everywhere, there's always, you know, some students that live in Ipswich and in every community that really require, and it's absolutely appropriate, you know, to have that higher level of need, whether that's medically fragile students or, you know, students with significant, significant needs that a public school district doesn't have the structures or resources to provide. As I mentioned, about a third of students, you know, have that emotional disability category. Our next is a little bit of a drop-off. I do have the numbers. A little, about 20% of our students are categories under autism and then intellectual disabilities after that, and then specific learning disabilities. So as my, the program managers know, as the principals know, you know, I, I think it's less about the disability, you know, label, so to speak. It's more about what does that need? So I know it's a bit of a roundabout question, but it's a hard one to answer. I think broadly speaking, you're absolutely right. And that's from a therapeutic standpoint, exactly what we're looking to do. The offset cost of providing, I'll just, I'll just pick on the high school, right? For example, just because John and Leanne are in the front, is very broadly speaking, I always account for any out-of-district placement annually to cost the district approximately $100,000 between tuition and transportation. That's variable based on what the actual placement is. Of that, we would receive, based on our circuit breaker reimbursement, about $35,000 of that back, right? Because we have to get to what's called a foundational amount for us to then have any qualifying reimbursement. So that foundational amount this year is about $54,000. So the first $54,000 of that $100,000 is on us. The rest of it, we receive 75% reimbursement of that $46,000, right? So with that said, one teacher, right, all soup to nuts with health insurance and whatnot, let's just say is $100,000, right? So it's kind of a one-for-one cost, just from a fiscal standpoint, one teacher for one student out of district. If there's three, four, or five students that we can prevent go out of district, that's a no-brainer, right? And so to your point, absolutely. I think because of targeted need here for FY26 and just for our district right now, that it is glaring that we have to build up those robust social, emotional supports from tier-one universal instruction for all, all the way into, you know, our specialized special education supports is where we're prioritizing right now. But absolutely, you know, taking a look at that, and that's always an iterative process. And it's sometimes kid-specific, you know? When we consider an out-of-district placement, that's not just a dollar sign, certainly, right? That is a life-changing event, you know, and decision from families and from us as a school district. So that is, those are always considerations. Hey, what can we do to make sure kids can stay in district first?
So with the, how many, is it, how many emotional behavior or therapeutic would be, is it three or four?
Positions-wise?
Positions-wise, yeah.
Yeah, so from, at the elementary level, again, as I mentioned, there's currently one school adjustment counselor. We're actually, we're in the process of trying to work everything within the, our current FY25, you know, budgetary parameters, in addition to, again, consolidating and whatnot and looking to add the second school adjustment counselor at this time. Same thing at the middle and high school. The middle school is working on hiring a clinician, therapeutic clinician. And then the high school is in the process of looking at hiring a teacher with a therapeutic background. So it would be four new positions, but not all four new positions in terms of new budget adds because we are, we're looking at a lot of reallocations. One thing I didn't mention, and I'm happy to get into, is the usage of our 240 IDEA grant, so our federal grant. As Dr. Blake mentioned, we're keeping that expectation for next year, you know, just at status quo. We're just not sure. We're very hopeful that we'll continue to receive all of those funds, but there are different items and positions that are going to find their way into that 240 grant. For example, this school adjustment counselor position at Doian will be through our grant fund, you know? But, so it doesn't hit our appropriated. It's helpful, right? We have that. But it's an add to the Doian community in terms of those social, emotional supports, things of that nature. Great question. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Hi. Thank you so much for doing this. I really appreciate the sort of deep dive and audit of our needs. I've never heard this happen before since I've been on school committee, so it's really nice to see that you sort of dug in and analyzed this all, so thank you. My question is, I guess, just for people listening at home to sort of oversimplify it perhaps, just so people sort of understand it. So is it safe to say we're sort of moving towards a model of, you know, we're not necessarily looking to take kids who are currently out of district and bring them back in district? Or maybe we are, but it seems like to me we're more moving towards a model of trying to retain more students in the district. And so we're hiring more positions, which will cost more money, but we're saving even more money by keeping them in district.
Yes, in simplest terms, yes. I think as we, you know, I, the biggest points of feedback that I have received in talking through with, with principals, with assistant principals, with all colleagues is that, that P-word, program, right? And I think that sometimes is just like, whoa, we're creating all these programs. And I think in a lot, a lot of districts around here, there are that term, that self-contained or substantially separate programming. We're too small of a district to move in that direction consistently. In order to have substantially separate programming consistently, it requires a cohort of students consistently that are going to fit that, that need from a service standpoint. So we are not moving in that direction. We are just building up our supports, our, the number of staff, and frankly, that, those niche areas of expertise here in a therapeutic standpoint, so that they add to our community of our staff already, they can be the experts in each of those schools to say, hey, what does this structure look like? To be thought partners, to make sure that we have those structures as needed throughout the day for those students. Maybe they just require that home base, just a break throughout the day for a little bit of time. And having that, whether it's a clinician or a teacher with that therapeutic lens, to support those students. So yes, it, 100%, the first, you know, step and motivation to do this was absolutely looking at our current needs of students and, hey, what, how can we best support our kids right now who are in district? As we build and settle in these structures, there are also, there's an ongoing process to reach out to the schools, you know, where our students are placed out of district to get their feedback. It's frankly, it's a state mandate that we check in at least once a year, as we know, but we're doing that more often. Our program managers are taking the lead there. And if and when there are ever times where those directors of those programs say, hey, the student's ready to fly, you know, let's, let's see what we can do to bring them back. In addition to these, these new structures, we always want to look at that because it's, we want all of our kids in our community, but also certainly from a fiscal standpoint, that's going to help us out as well. So there's a small handful of kiddos that, we're hoping to do that. We're working with families right now for next year already, which is exciting, so.
I have a couple questions for you. Thank you. This is great.
You got it. No problem.
Made it very easy to understand.
Great. Thanks. Appreciate that. I'll try.
So you mentioned a few staff were contract.
Yes.
And you also said that currently about 25 to 27 hours at a certain salary. But if we, if they became employees, then we'd get like 32 for the same amount.
Correct.
Are there any benefits to using the contract system? I guess the one I can think of is we don't have to, there's no health insurance.
Totally. Yep.
So that would be something that, yes, it would be the same salary, but there would be the health insurance cost. I'm saying that I think it makes sense, but.
It's a great question. So just the contracted rate for any providers is oftentimes double than what a traditional kind of hourly rate for an employee within our district would be.
They get commission maybe, or, I don't know how that works. Anyway, go ahead.
Yeah, there's, yeah, a lot of intricacies there in terms of using outside contracted providers versus having our own staff in district. It was a consideration, my first go-around and advocacy for, and this, this one example is our occupational therapist. Dr. Blake said the exact same thing. Yeah, this looks good, except what about health insurance? What about all the fringe and all that stuff, right? insurance? What about all the fringe and all that stuff, right? So a hundred percent. As we looked more into it and found other places of efficiencies from a budgetary standpoint, it started to make a little bit more and more sense. It also aligns much more appropriately with the department and the district's vision to reach all students. And so occupational therapy, for, for example, a lot of times is seen as a special education service. It doesn't have to be, though, and I think when we think, when we have this mindset that all students, all students are Gen Ed students, and special ed is a service, there's no special ed kids, right? It's, it's all students are Gen Ed students. How can we utilize our staff resources in a more proactive way? And so having those, I know it may not sound like a ton, but having those five, six, seven extra hours a week is certainly going to help. Hey, what can we do, especially with our youngest learners, pre-K, K, grade one, to look at handwriting, to look at sensory regulation developmental skills, not from a special education standpoint, from a Gen Ed standpoint, so that they can truly look in, to collaborate, to co-teach with the classroom teachers, to help build their repertoire, skillset, things like that, instead of saying, hey, every, every hour that this contracted person is in district is billable. What can't we do? We can't have them come to a consultation meeting because it costs us something per hour. We can't have them come to staff meetings because it costs something. We had a new IEP, we had to say, sorry, you can't come to the training because we got, you're billing us, right? So it's all these things that, again, are kind of fringe, are outside the box of direct service, that are going to really, from a cultural standpoint, support our students and our staff that much more, so.
I wonder if you'd be able to retain, you know, if they become like permanent staff as opposed to a contract, and they're like, oh, that's up, or, you know?
Yeah, so that's the plan. That's the open plan. For our, so occupational therapy was that, that one that we really took a hard look at, and that's part of our budget proposal, to have that person come in district. The other contracted services are, you know, they're, they're more minimal to even really justify, you know, moving in that direction. So, so we'll maintain that, and I think that, that is appropriate, you know? But that's, yeah, but great question, but yeah, we, we dove into the holistic, you know, cost of bringing a, a staff member, you know, in the district.
My second, I guess that was a few questions, or a second subject, was the early childhood coordinator position. What, what positions are currently covering? Because obviously, like, there are things getting done. So who is, what positions are covering for that right now?
I think it's safe that I can speak for the elementary crew. That is a classic case of too many cooks in the kitchen. There is a lot of people doing a ton of work, and the efficiency and the work smarter aspect ain't happening, and that is too, no fault of anyone. It's just like, all the great ideas are everywhere, and it has, we've gotten the job done, but really, as it pertains to our preschool program teachers and related service providers, and then fam, you know, families that, you know, they're new to the game, they're new to the district, right? It's their first time, you know, experiencing, hey, what is Ipswich Public Schools? To have a point person, a liaison, and to align, this is what Ipswich Public Schools is from a preschool program at both schools, so that we're looking, we're looking consistent, we're looking cohesive, to make sure that our private preschools feel that level of support, like, hey, we're here, you know, as a public school, and we can support you. There's been a lot of feedback from those private schools, and to look at all those things. So, yes, the job is getting done. One of the, you know, but there's, there's a lot of benefits to having that one point person. There's been a lack of consistent professional development about, across both schools, or, you know, for our staff. Our teachers are getting it, but it's just messaged a little bit differently. So again, if our goal is alignment, we need to have that one point person to do all those things and more. The, the list, I think, half joking, has continued to, to increase in terms of the responsibilities of that role, because I know it's only, it's pre-K and kindergarten, but there's a lot. And if we want to invest in our earliest learners to, to intervene as best as we can and as quickly as possible, that's really just going to help to make sure that those, their skills are built, you know, early on as well, so.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Thanks. Okay, thanks a lot. Appreciate it.
Right, if you'd just give me a minute to reset here.
Hey, Adam. You hear me? I can't hear you. There you go. Okay. Off set?
Yep.
Can At Home hear Adam?
Am I good to go?
I believe so. I'm going to put up your first slide.
All right. Hi, everybody. Thank you so much for getting creative with me. This is absolutely not how I anticipated the week to go, but I'm so glad that I'm able to jump in and share the Doian budget with you without getting anybody else sick. So thank you again for, for being able to help me get creative in terms of, and being able to share this important information with you. Are we up on slide one, so the Connected Community mural?
Yes.
Okay, great. So as is tradition in Ipswich Public Schools, we do have just a, a little bit of student artwork that we wanted to share. This is our Connected Community mural, and this is something that was included in the school improvement plan, and we had discussed that in late fall. But just as a reminder to folks who didn't catch it last time, the Connected Community mural is a collection of three hundred and seventy students plus a number of staff members' designs, and their designs are all connected through that...
Whoops, hang on.
Here's what I found.
We have Siri helping us for a second. Hang on.
Oh, very excited.
There we go. I just wanted to make sure you were turned up all the way here, and you are.
All right. Is this better? I can try and speak a little bit louder, too, or even pull, pull the mic closer if you guys are having a tricky time hearing.
That's good.
Better?
Okay.
Yeah? Okay, I think I'm seeing Haley Ristay. She's perfect. Thank you, guys. So essentially, this mural is a, a collection of artifacts that our kiddos put together with staff. And as you know, the focus of the Doian this year has really just been continuing to come together as a community to do what's best for kids. As I say every time I talk about the Doian, I, I couldn't be more proud of the work that we do every day to support students, and I couldn't be more proud of the staff in our building and the way in which they, they care about and love on kids. It's a really wonderful place to be, and I think this mural really embodies all that we do every day, to make sure that we together are one community. The next slide is just kind of a refresher on some of those goals that we're working on, and this directly connects to our school improvement plan. But the, the four major topics that we are kind of running with this year at the Doian School are making sure that we're supporting students' social, emotional, and academic needs, engaging kiddos in challenging academic programs. We're really wanting to hold students to the highest expectations possible, so they realize they truly can achieve what they set their mind to. We continue to work on preparing students for a diverse world, and we're also just being really reflective and maintaining our, looking at our traditions, and then also building some community connections. So some of the big work that we've been doing is looking at our assessment data to target instruction through our flexible learning blocks. Right now, every grade level has two flexible learning blocks where students receive targeted instruction based upon data. So we teach our, our tier one curriculum, but then every teacher in the building acts as an interventionist twice per day, typically about four times a week in either reading or math. That way, their students receive tier one instruction, they're able to receive prescriptive instruction at the level they present. We're continuing to work on identifying efficiencies in our schedule. We've moved mountains last year in terms of building a schedule that's able to best support students. We have more work to do, just in terms of cleaning up some of the block scheduling, and also fitting in all of the different programs that we offer. We offer so many different things here, more than I've seen anywhere else, especially at the elementary level. Well, truly at all levels, but specifically looking at elementary here versus past experiences. For me, we offer so much, and it can be tricky at times to fit them all into our school day, especially with our Thursday early releases. We continue to work on expanding our responsive classroom philosophy. You can see "care" says now become everywhere. You walk into the lobby, there's a big "care" sign. Our vision emissions on the wall, it's embedded into the slideshow, but we're continuing to do that work, just so that students have access to that common language in the hallways, at home, at recess, things along those lines. A couple of other points that we continue to work on here is just making sure that we are reflective of all of our kiddos in our building. We want to make sure that we're building mirrors and not windows. So we want students to see themselves in our school day. We want to represent the cultures that come into our building. We want to make sure we don't have any kiddos who are, who are kind of peering in through a window, trying to feel us so they, they belong. As Eric had talked about previously, we're continuing to work on strengthening those relationships within our community, and also really focusing on that pre-K level. I was fortunate enough to attend some of the early childhood meetings that take place once per month, and just got to check in with some of the pre-K providers in our community, and they do really, really great work, and they're doing really great things, and they want to partner with us, and there's some great avenues to explore that. So I'm excited to, in partnership with our early childhood coordinator, continue in that vein of our school improvement plan. The next slide is, is really a focus of our, our budget highlights, and much of the changes that we are experiencing in our building are kind of following the trajectory of some of the district changes. But just to kind of speak through to them specifically, currently our, our staffing levels, there's a handful of changes that are proposed in this budget. We have a halftime literacy coach who has done unbelievable work in terms of helping us to get our wit and wisdom curriculum in place. There's still a lot of work to do. Teachers have been hard at work in terms of making sure that they're putting their best foot forward in unpacking this, this major curriculum. But having the literacy coach has been essential for us to do this successfully, and has also helped to prevent teacher fatigue, just in terms of it can be an enormous undertaking to unpack an entirely new program in such a core content area. So having this coach available to us has been incredibly helpful, and we're proposing that we move that into our appropriated budget for the fall. We're also proposing an increase of a .5 health teacher. This would be a new position for us as a district. There are a number of health standards that have become presented, and, and we're finding that there isn't currently the space and time in the PE curriculum that's being offered to meet these standards. So the proposal of adding this position halftime at the Doian and halftime at the Winthrop will help us to ensure that we're able to teach all the content that has been assigned to us at a state level. One of the areas that was really challenging for us to sort out was the proposal of the decrease for us. It would be .5 of a world language teacher. I, my understanding of this position is that it was previously a grant, and then it was moved into the appropriated budget, and what we've found is that continuing the program has proven to be difficult in terms of ensuring that it's sustainable over time. Right now, having a position across the two buildings and finding ways to fit it into the schedule's been really hard, and it's created blocks that are really short for kiddos. So while we know that it is something that is, is certainly important to learners, and allows for us to, to expand opportunities for students, we also do so much of that, that it can be tricky to fit all of it in. In terms of social-emotional learning, we did have, after examining our special education staff and looking at shifts in enrollment for next year, we were able to adjust one para educator schedule. So rather than reducing the para educator in our building, I'm proposing a transfer of one para educator to our student support team. This person would work with our social worker, school adjustment department, to create a student support center. One of the things that we've found is that there are situations in different classrooms where kiddos need acute support and interventions to be able to be there most successful, and we don't always have an extra set of hands in the building to be able to do that. So we're trying to kind of build a, a robust tier two, tier three support for students, and we'd like to kind of pilot that through the implementation of a student support center, so that if we have a student who needs support, or who needs help with acclimation, or who could benefit from a social story, would have someone available to be able to support them. Another, another note here is our improvement of systems. Right now, we have a very limited furniture budget, and unfortunately, it's, it's just not enough in terms of equipment for us to replace what needs to be replaced. We are proposing that there be an increase to the equipment line, so that we're able to build a sustainable, predictable, systematic approach to replacing materials, starting with our art room. We got very creative in terms of converting old lunch tables, but they're just not adequate for our kiddos. So our, our first step is replacing those materials in the art room, and then from there, kind of conducting a building-wide audit, so that we're able to say, this year, you know, at second grade's turn, we're going to use these funds to make sure that we can repair or replace the furniture that's available there. And then the next year, we'd have, you know, a different team who's identified as needing support. In terms of teaching materials, the, the largest increase there is related to reading materials, and so much of it comes from our implementation of our new curriculum. There are a number of costs that are associated with it, and we worked really hard to try and figure out how we could get creative, but there was a pretty sizable increase for reading materials. There were a couple of other adjustments. Social studies materials, we used mystery science, and we offset the cost a little bit, because we had, it was like fifteen hundred dollars for technology and seventy-five hundred for materials, and we actually needed two thousand for technology and seven thousand for materials. So that was a, a pretty quick and easy shift. And then the last piece is just preschool materials. Our preschool teacher didn't have the same supply budget as grade level teachers, K through five, so we just made some adjustments there to make sure that it was equitable for all of our staff, pre-K through five. And the last piece that Dr. Oxford and Dr. Blake, I believe, talked to in the beginning is just some funding transition. So as of right now, there are pieces of our budget that wouldn't necessarily appear when you look at the Doian budget book, but that's because they've been moved over to the central levels. And then the last slide just speaks to enrollment for next year. So as of right now, we have three hundred and seventy super wonderful kiddos pre-K to grade five. We looked at our enrollment for, for next year, and we projected a couple of additional learners per, per classroom. If that does pan out, again, it's tricky to know, you know, even this past year, we had some shifts and changes over the summer, but if it does pan out that we have one to two students that do arrive per grade level, next year, we'd anticipate somewhere between about three hundred and eighty and three hundred and ninety kiddos. Our pre-K population's just a touch smaller than Winthrop's. We have one integrated program and one intensive program. Our integrated program has a weekly max of about thirty kiddos, two sections of fifteen, and then our differentiated learning program has a max of seven to eight learners. Okay? So I'm sure that there is pieces to unpack there. The last slide that presents is just kind of a breakdown of salary and services by comparison. But those are, those are kind of our big high-level changes. There's, there's been a lot of thought and a lot of processing and a lot of trying to figure out how to make all of the pieces work while also being mindful of the fiscal constraints that we're facing. But all of that being said, I'm happy to answer any questions or wonderings, or dig deeper into anything. If I look over here, it's, I have stacks of paper and a second screen pulled up, so I can check specific lines if there are any wondering. So I'm happy to, to speak to anything that you might be curious about.
First, congratulations.
Thank you. I was, I was excited to be here today, to see you all for a moment. Trapped in the Zoom room, but thank you so much.
I will start with a question that is probably going to be for you, for Amy Sullivan and Dr. Blake, because we're hearing about these new health requirements, and we're seeing the ask of the position. Can one of you explain what that's going to look like in a day? Like, is it going to be like on Tuesday, they have gym, on Wednesday, they have art, on Thursday, they have health? Is it, how, how does that work into the schedule?
There is currently a compass committee that's working closely with Dr. Wagner to kind of figure out what some of those logistics would look like, assuming that this position were to move forward. There's lots of pieces that are being unpacked, but there are certainly a lot of unknowns. The other piece that's really challenging for us, that we're trying to get really creative on, because again, we want, we want kiddos to be able to have consistent predictable blocks throughout their day. We want them to be able to come in and have solid chunks of time for learning. And the more programs we add, the harder it becomes to do that, because your Monday becomes ELA, and then you get a snack, and then you're running off to this kind of elective-based program, and then you're done, and then you're coming back and doing the second part of ELA. So I, I think that our first step for this is figuring out, you know, if we're able to include it, and then from there, it's trying to get creative, throwing it into the mix of all the things that currently kind of make it tricky to schedule. We've been fortunate enough to get creative, but it's certainly a, a big undertaking to work through and figure out.
Kind of to be determined.
Yeah, oh, sorry. I didn't hear that part.
A little bit. He can't hear you.
It's still...
Yeah, it's to be determined. We don't, we don't have the, what the, the actual schedule will look like. But as I, as I indicated earlier this evening, we have the, last year, we received the comprehensive health and PE standards from the state, and we spent last year unpacking them, and one thing became very clear from the educator... And one thing became very clear, uh, from the, the educator in that the number of standards that they, they are not able to meet in the current configuration requires that, that we look at, at this position as a halftime in the, in each building at the elementary level.
Next question's a quick, easy one. Um, does Doian have classrooms with flexible seating?
Yes, we do. Um, it, it's implemented at teacher discretion and it's used as just kind of a general accommodation for all kiddos. Um, there are some classrooms that I would say use it with greater frequency than others, but it, it's variable from room to room. Um, some years there are kiddos who thrive with it and other years it's just not, not a great option.
And lastly, this is just to kind of point out to our group, because I ask about enrollment every year. So I looked back, I, I think it does, the, it looks like the class sizes and the number of teachers stay the same. But, um, the prediction from last year's budget for this year was, uh, oh, I just lost it. There it is. Um, three eighty-one for Doian and actual is three seventy. So I, I understand those numbers can flex, but I'm just saying, we don't have to, those are not set in stone. I, anybody else?
I have two questions. Uh, one, hopefully a quick one, too. In terms of the increases for the reading materials for wit and wisdom, was that something that was predicted when that program was implemented?
Um, that's a great question. I, you know, certainly would defer to Dr. Wagner. She kind of organized those pieces with, um, the principals at the time. I think that there were pieces of the costs that, um, there was some awareness to. And then there are other pieces this year that were a little bit of a surprise to us, but I would defer to Dr. Wagner specifically on that question.
She's coming over, Adam.
You can just speak.
I'm just very loud, so I, I will just speak. So, um, some of the costs were not anticipated. Um, the kits that we received have, uh, uh, reading materials that are shared. So two students are sharing one physical book. It's the recommendation of teachers and our literacy coach and me that the kids each have their own books. That's one of the pieces. There's a G O Ts program, which is decodables, which is based on the science of reading that, uh, is adjacent to wit and wisdom. It's part of it. And so the company's moving it up through grade three next year. So we want to pull it up through grade three, especially because that class has not had the previous years of science of reading-based instruction. So that's one piece. And then some of the consumables are workbooks. So that we knew about, the students have workbooks. Some of the teachers choose, have chosen to make their own for next year. Particular kindergarten, the pages are kind of scrappy, erased and they, you know, uh, tear and the lines aren't thick enough. So that's a little bit of a cost savings. So the workbooks, we knew, the digital access, we knew. But we had to anticipate we'd need more books, um, and the G O Ts. So moving forward into FY twenty-seven, then we should be pretty set, except for the digital access, which we'll always need every year. It's a yearly membership. The workbooks, which are consumables and some of the books will, you know, have wear and tear. But, uh, we anticipate this is the last really big cost.
Thank you. Um, and then second question, um, this might be more logistics, but it's also sort of high level. Um, and I was thinking to ask this actually, um, when Dr. Oxford presented, um, in terms of how you prefaced your remarks around the idea of building belonging in the buildings, um, for special or for social emotional instruction and, um, special education. I'm wondering, again, high level, how, how do we see these supports or this type of instruction being taught um, within the classroom community? So not just provisions that are made directly to students who need support, but how are we teaching the classrooms and the other student learners to be inclusive and create that sense of belonging as well? Um, and I wonder how that particularly layers into, again, logistically, how you're going to create an actual student support center? Or maybe that's happening in community building at the elementary level? Um, it's kind of a lot.
Yeah, no, no, that's okay. Um, you know, I, in, in our building in particular, we've been doing a lot of work around this. And, and this year it had started out with, with the messaging around cares. So making sure that we had a really clear understanding of what our community values are, that we're going to be cooperative, assertive, responsible, empathetic and display self-control. Um, we've been working really closely with teachers to implement this through our responsive classroom pedagogical approach, which is something that this district has been doing for years. One of the pieces of feedback that we got, we had a consultant come out. She was from responsive classroom and she kind of did an, an analysis of our school. And she said that we were, you know, responsive classroom rock stars more than anything, but she had noted that we just aren't loud about the way that we use it. So this year we've been trying to get louder and be more clear and help kiddos be able to generalize those supports from the classroom um, to other areas throughout our learning environment. One of the pieces that's really important for the student support center, again, in hopes of preventing students from necessarily, um, or, or from being o- outplaced is being able to offer support so that our team is, is large enough and equipped enough with the space to be able to support students who are displaying, um, significant emotional needs. And we do have a cohort of learners who, um, would really benefit from this type of a space. And I, I think given the, the current climate of the world, it's something that, uh, is likely to, to perhaps grow. Um, so what we're looking at doing is building a student support center, kind of having it overseen by our school adjustment counselor team. And then them having this additional support person, this para educator who's able to implement some of the programming. Right now we find that we have students who would really benefit from intervention. Maybe it's a social story, first thing in the morning, or maybe it's an additional set of hands at recess. Or maybe it's a kiddo who has some lagging skills around, um, just appropriate social interactions. Or we also have times where learners pop up with, um, a, an acute but severe anxiety. And, and right now we just don't have enough hands in the building. Um, while there, while there's so many people who are well-intentioned and going above and beyond to offer support. It can be really difficult when we have four or five kids who are in need of an intensive support. Um, and we don't necessarily have a great place for them to go. Or having a place to go means offsetting an environment for a different cohort. So the idea of building a student support center allows for our school counselors to have a dedicated space to support kiddos who might need a little bit of additional time, um, or a private spot to regulate. And then it also allows for us to think proactively. Um, you know, if these ten kids were to have a movement break during the day, if they were able to, um, have access to doing heavy work. So I'm going to, you know, have Miss or Mister so-and-so come and scoop me up in the classroom. We're going to bring books. We're going to take a lap, drop them off at Miss Digby's office, stop at the student support center, do a midday check-in and then return to class. Maybe that would prevent some of those, um, larger episodic events that can be difficult. Uh, oftentimes schools use this in the form of a cares corner or a reset room or a responsibility space. And it's something that's available to all kiddos. Um, but it also helps teachers to know that there is an option and an accessible support to them, um, so that they're able to continue teaching. Uh, and I, I think that's kind of the big piece to have this push is it helps us to be proactive and it also gives us a good solution when we have to be reactive. And fortunately, being able to implement this, um, at this point in time is budget neutral because we wouldn't have to increase by a para educator or another position. Um, whereas we'd be able to transfer, we'd be able to save a position for someone, um, move them into a role where they could emotionally support kiddos. Um, and then offer this, this generalized building-based support. But I do agree with you, part of the work that we have to do then is help kiddos know, this is what this space is for. This is how we use it. It is available to everybody. And then these are our agreements as a school community in terms of, um, what it looks like to be a learner in the classroom. And I feel like we do that well, but again, that's part of this work that we're doing just to, to be loud about what our practices look like at the Doian. Does that kind of help, um, Haley, in terms of answering that piece?
Yes, very much, thank you. It's phenomenal.
Of course.
Um, love to hear all of it. I wonder a little bit logistically about the physical space and, but you don't have to get into that. I'm sure that's a work in progress.
Yeah. We, we have come up with a few different, there's, um, in my office, just a, a, a big building map. And, and they're all the size of little stickies. So we've been moving sticky notes around all year, just kind of trying to think about what next year could look like. I do think we'll be able to identify a space. Um, we're going to have to get a little bit creative with it, but I just think this is too important. Um, there were a lot of questions earlier in the budget process about, uh, a couple of grade levels and do they need a class size reduction, that type of a thing. And I think that if we're able to, um, implement this type of a, a support center, we can be proactive without having to reduce class size.
Thank you.
Yep.
Um, I just have two really brief questions. Um, the first one for the furniture, like, uh, replacement plan, is that something that just, uh, just Doian would focus on? Or would that be like both elementary schools might order, you know, one thing, you know, a bunch of tables at once or whatever have you? I don't really know how that, I don't know if that's an added question.
So the, the rationale for this, um, there was always a, a particular amount of money that was, uh, in the equipment budget or at least the last couple of years there was. Last year it was reduced by eight thousand dollars and we found that starting this year, we weren't able to, to purchase out equipment materials. We got creative and we, we figured it out. Um, and as we were kind of going through the process, we wanted to make sure that we had funding available so that if we did have tables that were getting old or desks that were breaking or, um, equipment materials that kiddos and these would have, would have funding aside for it. And as we were kind of investigating the building to see where there was a need, I was in the art room and it occurred to me that there were these glorified lunch tables. And I was like, oh my goodness, this is, this is great, but also we should just have tables for kiddos. So one of the precipitating factors was a true need right now for our, our art room to have appropriate tables for all kiddos. Um, lunch tables with seats are not always appropriate for our youngest learners. And we figured that this could be a good way to kind of start the process, see how it goes this year, um, kind of conduct that audit, get, get the tables for the art room that we need. And then next year, kind of look where else in the building do we need, do we need supports?
Um, and then my second question might be for you or for, um, uh, the elementary school principal. Uh, with the reading program, are you seeing a, like a real improvement before you implemented it? Is there like a real positive effect on the students with the reading sets, cuts in programs? You know, just to see if there's actual, you know, positive feedback.
I think that there, I think we're a little bit early in the process to kind of see long-term effects. You know, we definitely conduct, uh, assessment data throughout the year, um, but we're still very much so in the unpacking phase. We have some kiddos who are thriving with it and other kiddos who, um, have some mixed feelings. But I think that we'll have a, a more clear understanding of the way in which this is impacting our community later in the school year.
Okay, thank you.
I do have, hopefully, just a quick question. I know we're on school one of four. Um, can you hear me, Adam?
Oh, sorry, I, I heard.
No, I, I can't hear you with.
Okay.
The microphones are just for TV.
Okay. Um, so, quick question, this is numbers and Tom, you might have the answer to this. But on, um, slide twenty-one, where it's category and staffing levels, I see the net budget increase and the, the budget increase percentage. But where, like for the increase in literary, in literacy coach and the health teacher and the point five reduction in world language teacher? Where do we see that in a line item with an actual cost?
I can, I can incident?
Yeah, I, Tom, I can pull it up, but if you have it in front of you, then that's fine, too.
So that, so in, in the budget books, uh, themselves, the last pages of each of the sections are Excel spreadsheets.
Forty for Doian.
I'm sorry?
It's page forty for Doian.
Yeah, that page begins on, Doian, it begins on page thirty-seven on, in the budget book itself. So while we're getting, while we're getting there, to cover the three, uh, three points that Adam made in his presentation about, about staffing on page thirty-seven, more than three quarters of the way down the page, beginning with the reading department or reading section. See the second line down where it says, uh, uh, literally, uh, excuse me, literacy coach, uh, salaries? We're now bringing the literacy coach into the budget. Uh, the literacy coach currently is paid for through a paying grant. So in the FY twenty-five column, which is the blue column on the budget page, there is obviously zero because the appropriated budget isn't paying for that position. Then if you go into the, the sort of the salmon color column, which is FY twenty-six, you see point five of that position. You'll see the other point five in the, in the, in the Winthrop budget, also in the reading section of the, of the, of the page. That's, that would be one example there. Go to the, uh, next page, page twenty, um, twenty, excuse me, page thirty-eight. Uh, what are we looking for? We're looking for health, so. The health, um. Yes, for physical education, thank you. So about halfway down on page thirty-eight, in the, in the physical education slash, slash, health section, also the section, the, excuse me, the second line down, you'll see a point five in this, in the salmon color, meaning fifty percent. Also, nothing in the, the blue column for FY twenty-five. And you see half of that salary, uh, in the salmon color column for fiscal twenty-six. The other half as well being in, in, in the Winthrop section.
Thank you.
And world language, if that was your next question, would be a couple, uh, sections up.
Yep.
Near the top of page thirty-eight. And you see that reduction between the blue column and the salmon color column.
Thank you.
Was that your question, Jen?
That was, thank you very much.
Yep, thank you.
Hey, um, any other questions?
I have a couple of quick questions, Adam. Um, one, I guess is just for us to sort of be thinking about. I want to make sure, I have some concerns about, um, investing in furniture. I know it's not a lot of money, but investing in furniture when we, um, are hopefully on a good trajectory towards a new school, school building, which will be, um, include a full furniture budget and all that. So I just want to keep that in mind. I do appreciate the need, um, you know, it's, it's going to be five or six years. Um, I just want it for us to sort of keep that in mind. Um, you know, it's ten thousand dollars for Doian and ten thousand dollars for Winthrop. So it's not a ton, but, um, those little things do add up. And then my other question, which I'm pretty sure I know the answer to, but I'll ask it anyways. Um, I'm assuming the literacy coach is a permanent, full-time sort of forever position? It's not like a three or four years to get wit and wisdom up and running? No, okay.
No, there, there is so much that, you know, once we get past the point of wit and wisdom being implemented, this position will be able to do just in terms of coaching, um, staff, modeling for teachers, being able to, um, help us develop those interventions for, for kiddos. Um, Alyssa Brand is our, our literacy coach and she's done a fantastic job of, in addition to implementing the, the wit and wisdom programming with our staff, also just being available to, to creative, uh, think through creative problem solving for students who have required support in reading.
For example, when we brought in the math, illustrious math curriculum, which is doing so well, we had a math coach in this building.
Yep.
And now we only have one literacy coach shared. That's, you know, where we're at, so we make it work. Alyssa's amazing, but that's a permanent position. We still have our math coaches.
Yep.
Anybody else? All right, uh, we hope you feel better.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
All right. So I am tipping my hand. I am going to take my computer, step out in the hall, record a message and cancel school for tomorrow. So, if you'll, um, oh, no. So I'm going to invite Amy Sullivan up to start the next, uh, presentation.
Can Charlie, uh, make the announcement?
Oh, can I?
Could you do the recording?
Am I allowed to do that?
No. No, 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 no.
Can I add like?
Enthusiasm.
Can I add like, brought to you by Charlie Quimby or like due to Charlie Quimby's efforts?
Go to the post around for Charlie.
I try. So, um, Adam, I think I'm going to give you the hook. All right?
Yep.
Not until I send it out, it's not official. I changed my mind in the hallway, Charlie.
I just don't want to know if I should do my homework, you know? You know, just because of you, Charlie, no way. We haven't had a single snow day yet this year. I've been waiting for it. I've been really waiting for it. Yeah, but my calculus test has moved back, so I'm fine with that.
We're still on, right?
Actually, a really well-planned snow night, snow day following our long budget night. So thank you, um, to the weather gods. Um, hello, thank you for having me. Um, before I delve into the budget, um, because this is the first time since I've been in Ipswich, we faced, um, a difficult budget year. I just prepared a few thoughts, um, that, that are really important and, and at the core of my heart that I would like to share. Um, so at the heart of every school budget is a commitment to people. A commitment to our students, our staff, our entire community. Budget decisions are never simply about numbers. They reflect our values, they reflect our dedication to creating a caring, which is our theme this year, supportive environment where children can thrive. supportive environment where children can thrive. As educators often remind us, every decision we make should be in the best interest of students. We know that budgeting requires tough choices. While we would love to support every initiative in our buildings, sometimes we are faced with a difficult task of balancing our resources carefully. These decisions are challenging because they impact real people. Nobody understands that more than a principal that needs to deliver news that a position or a program is being cut. They impact our students in the classroom, teachers who are shaping young minds, and families who trust us to do what is indeed in the best interest of our children. Even when the choices are difficult, our focus remains clear. To foster safe, supportive and inspiring schools where students can learn and grow and where educators have the resources they need to make a lasting impact. This is not about politics. It's about people and our shared commitment to their success. So I would like to delve a little bit into the Winthrop budget. This is the most beautiful mural. If you have not been inside the Winthrop School since last spring, I do invite you to stop by and take a peek of it. The title of this mural is called Sustaining Ipswich Outdoors. This is displayed in our front lobby and each image that you see there began with a pencil drawing that a student made for what they believed stood for their hometown. And then the artist, Yeti Frankel, came in and sort of put those on a large scale and this mosaic was made. Also with an Arts in the Park Day last spring where families were invited in. So every person in our community had the opportunity to lay a tile. And again, it speaks to our mission. We are a community of learners inspired to act with compassion, integrity and joy. I'm doing the next slide. Okay. So we already presented earlier in the fall about our goals. They are aligned with our strategy for district improvement. Meeting the needs of all students is our first objective. Embedded in there are some of the focuses this year, which are clearly on the implementation of our new wit and wisdom curriculum. We're also focused on rolling out the new Massachusetts IEP, which for the first time has student voice in it, which is great. We've also been able through the pain and FEFFY's grants to be able to provide the LIFES program, which is a course that twenty-seven educators are taking across the district to learn about trauma-informed schools. So I, I heard a question earlier about how we create that belonging. This is a course that I feel is, will have a great impact across the district. And as we talked about our health and wellness curriculum, I will add that these standards for comprehensive health and wellness curriculum may have last been updated when I graduated college in nineteen ninety-three. So it's been a long time coming to have real standards that address the needs for our current students. Objective two, creating innovative learning environments. Some of the things that we are continuing is our focus on environmental awareness, our efforts from our green team, leading initiatives like composting, harvest of the month or a no idling campaign. Traffic is always a big concern at Winthrop School. We also are looking to bring in some experiences that can be student-driven in our library program. For example, we surveyed students this year, Mrs. Vitale, in terms of generating what their interests are in books so that we can expand our collection. And then also connecting through a grant with Doian School to bring in a Comic-Con event this year. So we're looking forward to that. And I am pretty safe to say that that was driven by the interest of students and graphic novels and those things. Going into the third objective, building best practices to support diversity, equity and inclusion. We have in the district forty multilingual learners. Up until last week, twenty-eight of those multilingual learners were at Winthrop School. And I say were because six just moved out of the district and moved to California. So it tends to be a very transient community sometimes that we need to really adjust and figure out how we're going to deliver instruction. And so that has caused us to look at our EL model, both as it relates to how our multilingual learners will access our new EOA curriculum, but also how we are going to meet the needs of newcomers and students that are still multilingual learners, but perhaps at a higher level. And then lastly, we have been looking at attendance. Sort of having a committee this year to look at students who have a difficulty getting to school, what those factors are that come into play. And we've implemented student attendance contracts that involve the student in the conversation to help improve their attendance at school and establish good habits at the elementary level. And there are some others embedded in there, but just to highlight a few for Winthrop. Okay, so overall, this is the big picture of the Winthrop School budget. So you can see that our increase is at one point one-three percent. That was challenging to come in at that number. And some of these changes in staffing, you've heard a bit already, but I will just quickly reiterate that we do have some increases. One is that point five comprehensive health teacher that you already heard about from Principal Mullin and how, you know, it's still very fluid in terms of figuring out what that will look like once we get recommendations from the Compass team. For several years since I've been here, I have asked for another reading specialist, which at one point Winthrop School did have, and that has slowly been cut over the years. Or an interventionist. This is really the biggest priority in our budget right now. Number one, mainly because not only are the needs so great, but our Title I grant was cut drastically last year. It was actually cut in half. And that Title I grant provided for a lot of the additional support that we have been looking for, but now we don't have that funding from our Title I grant. So the addition of the new reading specialist is something that I feel is an absolute necessity at Winthrop School. Mainly, another reason is when you are earmarked as a school that meets the socioeconomic standard to become a target assistant Title I school, you are actually supposed to have what's called more than or comparability because you were receiving federal funds. And because Winthrop School is a district that has that population and at the school, we are actually supposed to have from the federal funding, more than what our counterpart has and not to pit two schools against each other. I don't make the rules, but that's what the funding says. And we are more, we are level funded in terms of our reading program in alignment with the other elementary school in town. So that's the ask for the reading specialist. One of the ways that I was able to try to add that into the budget and not increase the budget so much was down below, you will see a decrease into reading paraeducators. Again, very tough decision. But to have a reading specialist that can plan the instruction, deliver the assessments, analyze and have an IEA staff member, professional staff member do that, I think will make quite a difference. When, excuse me, when Eric was up earlier, he spoke about the changes and the shifts with our school adjustment counselor. So although those shifts are being made this year, we had some internal movement where our school, current school psychologist stepped into the role of early childhood coordinator. And one of our current school adjustment counselors will be stepping into the role of one of the new programs at the middle school. So it did leave some openings at Winthrop School. And we are now looking to implement the model that, that was spoken about earlier, so that we have more support for students, two school adjustment counselors and a shared school psychologist. I do want to point out that the school psychologist down below, you will see it as a reduction. So although we had carried a one-point-oh school psychologist in our budget all these years, the school psychologist actually picked up a portion of the counseling caseload. So it, she was really like point seven-five, you know, school psychologist for evaluations and like maybe another point-two-five in terms of giving counseling support. So it's not like we lost a whole, a whole half there. So it's some shifting. So we have, we're planning for two school adjustment counselors and a shared school psychologist between the schools. And now the school psychologist will strictly be just focused on those evaluations. We have like a reallocation that might not be clearly seen in the budget, but I thought it was important to note. You will see in our special education line that we have been carrying nine special education teachers. There were eight previously that were carried in the appropriated budget and one that was carried in a grant fund. So we are bringing over the special education teacher that was previously grant-funded. So you would think then it would move up to nine, but we are actually reducing one of our special education positions just in terms of taking a hard look at parity, caseload numbers. That was a tough decision that we had to make, but one that we think through some staff and student alignment that we will be able to adjust. And then further, considering the needs of early childhood, one of our special education teachers is going to focus on some early childhood intervention work. We know that closing any gaps very early on is where you get the biggest bang for your buck and to have that position focused on kindergarten and early childhood will be a shift next year. And then going forward, the reductions that I haven't really addressed myself would again be the point-five world language teacher. Just to reiterate, that is a position that was brought in through FEFFY's, brought back into the, our operating budget and looking at the financial future and considering the needs of the reduction of our Title I grant, the needs of our students. It doesn't seem that we're going to have the funding to support to be able to grow that program the way that we would really like to so that it could be in place with fidelity. So that is, that was a hard decision. We also had at Winthrop School for many years, the support of a library assistant in our library media program. This was absolutely wonderful to have somebody with the knowledge of books, such as the library assistant at Winthrop. Also, just in terms of like running the library, right? Everything like, you know, the restocking and the shelving and all of those things. We were actually the only school in the district that had it. No other library and media specialist in the district had that. So at this point, given the need to make cuts, that is a position that we have, I recommended that we would reduce in terms of having more classroom, student-centered paraeducator or assistant support. So those like are the, the main staffing highlights and I'm happy to answer any questions after the presentation. And then going forward in this budget of note, you will see in those line items that, Jen, I think you were asking, where do I find the percentages, the increases, the decreases? You will see that it looks like two areas in our budget have greatly decreased, but that's really because they're being accounted for more centrally. Those two areas are special education. In particular, in the Doian or Winthrop budget, we used to sort of switch off who would carry summer services each year. Extended school year services at the elementary level that encompasses both schools, not just one school. So it actually makes sense to house it in the, the central budget. And then contracted services. That has been a line item that has been really hard to project over the years. Contracted services encompasses many things in special education in our budget. It, for one, could be bringing in an evaluator. If we have a student that needs to have an evaluation given in a different language. So it could be translated services. Sometimes just one evaluation could be close to a thousand dollars. And so depending on how many students are referred, you can see how quickly that would grow. Contracted services also account for when we have students that have specific needs and maybe we don't have a person such as a teacher of the deaf or an orientation and mobility person for students who might be visually impaired. We don't have those people on staff, so then we have to contract out and that becomes very expensive. And so we are now bringing that into the district's special education budget. Same with technology. We have some instructional software for reading and math. And you might recognize their names such as Lexia in reading or our STAR assessments in reading and math that are used across both elementary schools. And so my dear colleague, Mr. Borgan, has decided to take that in under his budget. It doesn't mean that we don't have those programs. It's just accounted for elsewhere. And then some other increases that you will see in different line items. Again, I do have some equipment increases. That is mainly due to a wet issue that we have had in our pre-Kay Wing with some unfortunate flooding where the addition to the building was built on a slab. We had to take up all the carpet in one of our kindergarten rooms, dry it out and eventually replace it with some tiled flooring. And on the same side of the building adjacent to that kindergarten classroom are two preschool rooms that are experiencing the same kind of concern. So in order to get ahead of that, just in two weeks, over February break, we will be replacing the floors in the preschool room. And so the equipment needs are things like area rugs. If you can imagine, kindergartners and preschools spend a lot of time on the floor and napping and things like that. So there will be some additional needs in there. It's not a huge increase, but it's a slight increase to account for re-outfitting those classrooms. And then lastly, just need to refer to my notes for a minute. Oh, that's it. Sorry. Dr. Wagner gave me her glasses because I am of an age that I need them. They're not quite me, but they are Dr. Wagner, so I'm yelling her. I also, in terms of the way we build our classroom budgets, in the past, we have sort of allocated about a thousand dollars per classroom for all the needs in that classroom. That has been level funded since I've been here for the past three years and before then, and I have noticed that we are ticking over that and I've sort of borrowing from other places and that, you know, just with inflation, it wasn't enough. So there's a slight increase in undistributed under teaching materials because I raised that to thirteen hundred dollars per classroom. So very slight, but needed. So those are the main highlights in terms of staffing in some of our line items. Everything else is mainly within. Everything else is mainly within, nothing shocking in terms of increases or decreases, but if you find something, please let me know and I'm happy to speak to it. And then the next slide is just our enrollment. So we have our enrollment on the left for each of the grade levels. We are three classrooms at every grade level except for our bubble year, which will be fourth grade next year. At some point, I had hoped that I might be able to sort of bring that back to three just from a spacing standpoint or just not having a bubble classroom. The needs of that particular grade level are very high. And in speaking with teachers and collaborating with Megan Gamble, our program manager, it would not be, as I started out in the beginning, to say the right thing to do by students. We absolutely need to maintain that fourth section of now fourth grade for next year. You will see that our numbers are a little higher. We do have a lot of changes in our enrollment, particularly at Winthrop throughout the year, some of it being for our multilingual population that moves in and out. We also have a lot of changes with our preschool numbers. Students can begin school if they are a student that we are providing services through their IEPs at age three. And everyone has a different three-year-old birthday, so sometimes those numbers grow throughout the year. And we will be enrolling more students between now and the end of the year. So when you see the number 35 in that column for this year, that's not where we will end up. The 45 that is listed is how much we could actually grow it. So there is room in there. Some of the room is our placeholders for students on IEPs that could be turning three. And some of them, we do have a few openings in our typical enrollment population right now for role model peers. And to kind of get ahead of that, we did our early childhood preschool information night earlier. Mrs. Amison plastered posters all over town, and we're doing like a big marketing and just to kind of talk how wonderful being in an integrated preschool model is. So the 45 is the highest that we could go, so I count for it. And then you will also notice that as you follow it down diagonally, in each grade level, I have added about two students at grade one, three students. Grade one, we typically do get more enrollments in. Right now, so many of our digital licenses, our consumables, our workbooks and things like that are down to the penny as to how many students we have. So I was, even with that projected planning this year, like when we got our wit and wisdom in, I didn't have enough of one grade level workbook. And so I'm calling Principal Mullin, "Do you have one you can send me?" or reordering it. So I always find it's better to be liberal than conservative on our numbers because it does impact the budget in our line items going forward. So I have also included five choice seats that we're opening up at grade five. We may or may not get those students. I would imagine we will get some. I think that that is a good year for people that are looking for choices outside of their hometown to bring a student in that last year of elementary school and kind of give them that edge to know their peers or know some of their peers before they transition to middle school. So that, I just wanted to explain why the number looks so much greater. It may be, and it also, we might not reach that mark. But I would rather, again, plan liberally than conservatively. Okay. And this is our overall comparison. This is Mr. Markham's slide, and so if you have questions about that, I will defer to him on those pieces. Questions?
I have a few questions. If we can go back to the number of students enrollment slide, just to clarify, the projected enrollment for 2025 with 45 preschool students?
Correct, for the two integrated classes.
That's physical capacity?
So, yes, that is, hold on, I need to find the right slide. I'm going back here. Yes, so we adjusted our preschool model this past year so that we have on Tuesday and Thursday, we have our three-year-old group, okay? So every day on Tuesday and Thursday, that can be up to 15 students. We also have a Monday, Wednesday, Friday group, our four-year-old group, that can also be up to 15 students, okay? And we have two sections. Some of those children, it's not 60, right? If you do the math, you know, 30 per teacher. It's not 60 because we do have a number of students on IEPs that come five days a week or four days a week. Their model is based upon their needs. So 45 is a good target number to propose that at. So there's a lot that goes into it, but does that kind of explain?
Yeah, and I guess what is the percentage of the integrated classroom of typical learners versus not atypical?
Sure, yep. So right now, we have been aiming for up to seven students with IEPs in eight role model peers. Based upon how many adults are in the classroom and how many IEPs you have, you can go higher as long as you maintain the ratio. Like if you only had five IEPs, you could go as high as 20 students in the classroom. I think our sweet spot is 15 students with that seven to eight ratio.
Okay. And then another question in your column of, or your slide on increases and reductions. So about the world language. And I think the introduction of world language to our elementary schools predates when you were here.
Yes.
I know we struggled with a teacher who left abruptly, and then the program kind of changed, and then we were sharing a .5 between the two elementary schools.
Yes, that's correct.
Does that summarize it? Is there anything that you can say that had that not happened and it got kind of significantly, for lack of a better term, watered down? Is there any way to reimagine it so that it would be a better fit that wouldn't be cut?
I think there would always be a way to reimagine it. I think if we didn't have the fiscal crisis that we have right now, that there would be lots of opportunity to reimagine it and to maybe even have it what it was last September when we still had Mandarin and Mrs. Carbone here. But the fact is, we have other needs at, we have other needs for literacy and math, and we had a budget deficit that we needed to meet. So, yes, that would be my hope. I think having a world language program is an amazing thing to have at the elementary level. It's unusual. It's definitely something that makes Ipswich unique in all the great ways. I will also add, though, at the middle school and high school, we've worked very hard to build up the world language program. My understanding is before I was here that there were years that, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that the middle school wasn't able to sustain even at that level, the world language program. And so now in sixth and seventh grade, we've gotten to a point that we have world language. Students choose a quarter of, have a quarter of French and Spanish in sixth and seventh grade. And then in eighth grade, they choose which language they want, and is it daily? And it's daily, yep. And then what I understand also at the high school is that beefing it up at the middle school level has also led to more students graduating with a seal of biliteracy.
The other thing I think is important to keep in mind is that we're also limited by the constraints of the length of the school day. And when you have certain programs that require certain amounts of time, there's only so many minutes in the day to have different programs available to students. And so, you know, there is a maximum to what's available and how often it's able to be offered.
So I would just add, so as Jen mentioned, so if you remember, it was here, it came through a grant, it was a different curriculum review process at that time.
Speak in the, can you speak?
Step up to a microphone so that people can hear at home.
So it came through a grant, it was a different curriculum review process at the time, and it wasn't sustainably, sustainable financially. It's a beloved program. I love it. In the world of the standards, it's very much, I think, about exposure versus working towards proficiency in a language. By the time you're in middle school, you're working towards proficiency. You're working towards hours, towards that seal of biliteracy, which is a stamp students can get on their diploma, which is very prestigious. And we've really enhanced the middle school program, and I'm very proud of that. At the elementary level, it's wonderful to have the exposure. When it comes down to it, the students have, is it 20 minutes?
So this year, they have K to three, they have 25 minutes a week. And at grades four and five, because of the demands of the schedule, we were only able to fit in 25 minutes one of the three trimesters at grades four and five.
Which is wonderful to have. However, it's hard when you're balancing against the demands of a rigorous science of reading back program that our kids really need for literacy. So I wish there were more and more time in the day, but it hasn't proven to be financially feasible. We've beefed up the middle school program so students can still gain their proficiency, and it's working. So that's where it's at.
And I would just add, we had a really thoughtful discussion this afternoon with staff just in preparation for tonight's budget presentation. And they, Dr. Wagner, you have to put your password in here.
Oh, sorry.
I think maybe we're stepping on it.
I think we're stepping on it.
And the teachers all said that, you know, they are willing to certainly weigh in if there are questions about the world language program and how great we love it and how joyful it is, but also how they feel in terms of trying to fit it into their schedules. So, you know, that came from one of our teachers who suggested, you know, perhaps we could provide some data of our thoughts around it too, and we're happy to do that.
Is it safe to say that the new health standards also are putting an additional sort of?
So I think that's still fluid. I think everyone is hopeful that we're not adding one more thing to the schedule with the new health standards, but we're also realistic in knowing that in our current model of two PE classes per day and looking at all the additional things that needed to be taught, that we couldn't do it at that same level funding. I think it's fair to say that that feels like a much more of a directive from the DESC than this really innovative and great idea to bring elementary world language in. It wasn't a directive of the DESC, but it was an amazing thing to have. And if I could have both, I absolutely would want everything and not to have any reductions up there. But...
Sorry, so just for clarification, will that 25 minutes, that's no longer part of the world language program? Will that go into the health program or are those 25 minutes going to be absorbed into another part of the schedule?
So I think that that is what the Compass Committee of Teachers is working on, and they'll come forward with their recommendation to us in the coming months. I don't want to, I don't know, so I want to be transparent with that. Again, what we do know is that we can't fit all the extra standards. What has happened is like the standards at the high school have been somewhat pushed down to the middle school. The middle school standards are now pushed down to the elementary school. And so we don't have enough bandwidth with how our PE is currently structured to just say to the teachers and pick this up along with all of your other standards. So I think we are all very much looking at like not really adding another thing to the school day, but figuring out a way to meet these standards.
Sneaking in just to quickly add, seeing Dr. Blake's face, that, so there's a Compass Committee, which you may not know, it's, the model here is we don't have curriculum directors. We have teachers who are teacher leaders that I facilitate their work. It's a two- to three-year cycle, so Dr. Blake talked about it. So the timing was slightly off. They have a day with me at Town Hall in March, this team, where they will be making a recommendation for curriculum. We have the budgeting already for it, and they'll be making recommendations for scheduling that then come to the administrators and me. The timing wasn't quite right for this process, but we do have the recommendation already for them for the mass amount of standards that we need to cover at the elementary level. We wanted to be sure it was in the budget. So that's what that language is about.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can I ask one more clarifying question around that, too? So in the spirit, I think, of Kim's remarks earlier, just understanding more broadly what our process and policy is around how we assess programmatic cuts and how that fits into a longer timeline and if the Compass team plays into that or just how you guys are looking at that further out.
So the short answer is that there's the state standards that we follow that dictate what content areas we teach and the skills that are taught within them. And then locally, we've developed the curriculum review process. That's me and the Compass Committee, who are teacher leaders. So it's a group, say, of, I don't know, eight to 10 people, grades pre-K through 12, and it's a set process that we go through together. The world language program was brought on at the elementary level through a PAIN grant prior to that program. And so it just went a different route, and it looks a little different at the state mandate level as well at the elementary level. So the process by which a curricular program would be, I don't know, reduced or the curriculum has changed, comes through myself, the principals, and that curriculum review process. But it's always looked a little different for world language at the elementary level because it didn't start through it because of a PAIN grant that was written essentially. So.
I have a quick question on the highlight slide. The literacy coach would be also under an increase?
Yes, I'm sorry, that probably should have been there. I was trying to highlight sort of the major things, but yes, that would be an increase because it's coming out of the grant and into the budget, the .5 literacy coach.
Else questions? Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
A lot of what is in my budget's already been talked about tonight, but I'll jump right in and happy to discuss it. Our artwork is actually in our kindness t-shirts. Our kindness club designs these shirts every year. We provide them to all the students and we wear them. Actually, we're going to make sure our eighth graders have theirs and bring them to Washington, DC, because they're so nice and bright.
Can't lose them.
We'd wear our night tour of the monuments. They'll come in very handy there. Actually, a former Ipswich Public School student actually produced these. He's the old business guy. I think he's working with some of the other schools as well. But on the back, it's a nice tiger who's yelling, "IMS is kind." So that's one of our things that we're happy about. So I'm not going to read the whole slide, but we definitely want to, we have a great school. We want to continue doing the things that have gotten us there. For instance, providing a robust academic program, strong related arts, and encouraging so many kids to participate in after-school activities and extracurriculars. But we're not just going to stand on our laurels and we're going to keep going forward. So we have a number of different initiatives we put in this year. Some of them are more behind the scenes, such as the grading policy, our new discipline handbook that we're using. But the one that probably affects the students the most is our restorative circles, and it sort of goes to that sense of belonging, really, that you were talking about. We have 13 different restorative circles carved out. We work on them on different Thursdays, rotates about every two weeks. And we also have restorative justice, which is different, that's part of the discipline part, but this is community building for the whole school. And we have a number of different topics we discuss. Most recently, we've tackled motivation, what motivates you, gossip, Sean, I don't know, some others that pop into your mind. At first, they were more softball topics, trying to get the students just more comfortable talking. Now we're getting into some more heavier topics. Now we're getting into some more heavier topics that affect them more. So weekly, our grade-level teams decide which circles that we're going to have. We made this large database. We used one of our Thursday afternoons to create them, and we have probably about 20 different circles ready to go. It's just a slideshow with a protocol that we follow. And it's great. When we do these, the whole school is operating. I love my group. I have a group, Sean has a group. Everyone, except for our two secretaries, is engaged in a group. So sometimes the kids get to see people they don't normally see. It's definitely a highlight for me to go in there and be back in the classroom. It's been a while. So that's always fun. And I think they're very positive in keeping that going. But a lot of what's in the budget this year has been talked about. We talked a lot about the programs. And Charlie had asked a question earlier about when does a program start? When do you build that? We do have a few students that are out of district place now. But coming, we have a few students in our school now and some other students moving in next year, where it sort of tips the balance, where we do have a cohort of students that really could use these new services. And that's aimed at keeping them, not only keeping them in the district and saving money, but more importantly, letting those students stay in school with the kids they grew up with, the kids that they know from their elementary schools and, you know, lived with their whole lives. So we're definitely happy about that, and we're going to put some resources behind it, which I'll talk about in the next slide. And the health, we've talked about the health curriculum a lot this year, this meeting. We have some, definitely some new guidelines. So we are going to be purchasing, hopefully, a health curriculum. As Dr. Wagner alluded to earlier, most of our curriculum is teacher-created, but these standards are pretty deep, and there's a lot of new standards. And we want to, we have some very sensitive topics that are, predominantly, we taught a lot of them at the high school, are now moving down to middle school as society changes and we have needs. A lot more counseling on sex education, drugs. We see vaping as an issue that's been going on. So we need to tackle these issues earlier. So we have a curriculum that goes hand-in-hand with that that'll help us address those. So that's another part of our budget. It's not a huge amount of money, but it is an addition from what we've had in the past. Our only other, our only consumable we have in the building is our math curriculum, our illustrative math workbooks for, and we want to keep that going. The rest, like we said, is teacher-created, which is fantastic. When I was a teacher, I always wanted to create my own things. I use the book as a resource. We have a great talented staff that does that. And then lastly, the world, the languages. We've beefed that up over the last few years. Now we have six, half of our sixth graders take French, the other half takes Spanish. In the seventh grade, it flips. So by the time they're going into eighth grade, they get to choose French or Spanish this year. And that's new this year, the first time we've done eighth-grade French. This year, we have about 24 students. We are asking for a .2 increase so we can add another French class. So hopefully, we're up to more like 36 students or so. And it's definitely well worth it when we can get that seal of biliteracy. And I think that's great for the district to have that choice. The nuts and bolts of where the money is, I know last year I was here, and I looked like the hero because we were reducing. And that's really just based to, based on where some of our high-needs students go. We had, you know, matriculated a few students to the high school, and we were able to lower our budget at that point. Now we have a cohort coming up along with some other students. Hopefully, we can bring some students back that are out of district place. So we do have an increase of 3.19%. So let me talk a little bit more about this program that we see. I know Amy mentioned Teresa Guillaume from Winthrop Middle School. We've hired her. She's going to be coming in in March to work with all of our students, but also a large segment of her time is going to be with this, what we're calling a program. It's very, it's going to be created so it's very diverse and can tackle all, a variety of needs. But it's going to be, she's going to be a large part of that, along with a dedicated special education teacher who is currently in our eighth grade, and she's worked with both sub-separate, sub-separate education and inclusion. She also has a trauma-informed background. So she's going to be leading that educationally. We're going to have an RBT, a paraprofessional along with this group. Some of those resources coming up from the elementary schools. As you see, their budgets are a little bit lower. As those students move up, some of their needs come with them. So that's a big, big part of that. I think we can give those students a great education here, and hopefully cut down on any out-of-district placements that might go with that. And then talked about the health curriculum. Those are the big things. Our numbers, our seventh and eighth grade, our seventh grade is the largest group and largest grade in the district. Three students larger than our eighth grade, which is the second-largest. So when you see the sixth grade is a little bit smaller, there's a big difference because we have the two biggest groups in the, in the district right now. The sixth graders coming in, and again, this was created just by looking at who's in fifth grade now. As Amy said earlier, that those numbers can change. So right now, we're at 117. We're predicting that because that's who's in fifth grade. But that changes all the time. So that's more of a normal-sized class rather than, so you can see the difference in numbers. If you look at eighth grade, you can see the numbers are a little bit higher. That is because we have the French and Spanish every single day. So we have, we actually have one less teacher in that grade, but it's made up by French and Spanish. So those are our enrollment numbers, which people may ask questions for later. And where's the money coming from? So one of the things that Dr. Oxford talked about was that IDA grant. In the past, we've had that in our budget. That's now been moved to the central special education budget. With that, some of the, to offset some of the other things that moved there, we talked, we talked about how the partial PT, OT, PT, and PTA, that all those partial .2s and 1.5s, those are all going to that budget. And also our extended school year budget for summer school, that is also gone. And that's basically the equivalent of that $86,000 that we had last year in our budget for a special ed teacher. We do have one special ed retirement. It's Amy Smith, who's been a fantastic reading teacher for many years, served the district very well, is retiring, and we are not, we're not rehiring for that position. Jackie Potter, our program manager, has done a great job, and we've been able to figure out a way to service all of our students' reading needs with some of the staff that we have onboard now. Some of them are going through Horton-Gillingham and Wilson training this year, and will be ready to go with them next year. So that's where the money's going. So you'll see on the, when you get to the budget spreadsheet, you see a lot of things in parentheses, and I can answer those questions about who's, where it's, who's going where and what. Those are our big drivers. And then Tom's salary about where the money's coming from. But I think at this point, it's time for questions and happy to answer any questions you have. Thanks, Tom. That's a good one. I can... That was quick, but most people talked about everything that was in my budget presentation earlier, because it's really the program that we're building and the health curriculum. And as far as the health resources, we're talking $6,700. So we're not, it's not a giant program like it was last year. It's not as expensive as that, but it is a good purchase that the Compass Committee, they spent a lot of time, all year long, they've been researching it. And we have some visit coming up to go see it in action.
Going to another district in March.
Lot of work with the PE Comprehensive Health Committee.
I guess I'll, is this replacing Dare? I don't know if you, middle school still does Dare.
No, it's a regular health class that Mr. Fitzgerald, who would have been teaching health when Charlie was there?
Mr. Mitchell.
Mr. Mitchell, yeah.
So it's Mr. Daley now. A lot of what he's been teaching is part of our RA rotation, related arts rotation. A lot of it is a lot of social, emotional topics. So you touch on other things, but not as in-depth. A lot of that curriculum's going down to the elementary school.
Okay.
That's a new position there. And a lot of what's been taught in high school will now be taught in middle school. I'm not sure what high school's teaching.
Don't do drugs. That's the gist of it.
I'm happy to take any questions. And you can talk about specific numbers if you want to look at that, those spreadsheets.
Um, can...
Is it at the bottom? I went too far. I might need my book for those questions.
There, I see an increase of 2.5 FTEs for music.
Oh, yes. We also have a point, it's an increase of a .2. Should be. Let me look.
A .2?
It's a .2 increase. There was, the teacher at the high school was 1.0 at the high school, is now a .8 at the high school and .2 at middle school. She's a chorus accompanist. So I think they're reducing a few of her classes at the high school, and that sends her to us to work with our chorus as well. But yeah, I believe that's .2.
So that's an increase to 2.5, an increase of .2.
Yes. And the other people that are, that make up that, I mean, we have Ms. Haltmaier, who's our one teacher, but we also have a portion of Michael Coelho, a portion of Ursus Scarono, Jamie Fremont Smith, Rebecca Pagano. There's a lot of cobbled pieces together there, but .2 is Frost coming in. You also see that .2 on the French there. That's so we can have an extra eighth-grade French teacher.
So also, library, it says teacher level, oh, it's .5 level. Okay.
Yeah, that's shared between, our one librarian, Ms. Chang, is shared between middle school and high school. So that's the same.
Any need for an assistant?
I don't think so. It'd be nice, but I know we have a substitute who loves to spend all of her free time there. She's a former librarian, so she's sort of our assistant when she's in the building. She, when she's off, she goes right to the library and helps. But she's our sort of bonus. One other thing that you might see some, you know, that increased-decrease line in the white there with parentheses, our I Ready, which is our formative assessment system, that's moved to our tech budget now. It's the same amount of money, it's just moved there. It's more of a, it's all web-based and online, and fits in their budget nicely. But that's why you see a decrease in the teaching materials for English and math. That's the I Ready.
Got any other questions? Okay. Thank you.
So, thank you.
How's it going? Do you sleep like we do?
You'll have to get us back to the slideshow.
Yeah. No worries. So being that this is usually when I'm asleep, I...
Like you're sleeping tomorrow.
I know. I get to sleep in tomorrow. Thanks. Thanks for that. I did have a Coca-Cola, which I, so several years ago, I cut caffeine out of my diet, so I had, feeling fairly awake. Hope I can get to sleep tonight after that, though. So here's, we'll start with a piece of artwork here from Wayne Carlton. This looks like it was from their Impressionist assignment. This is one of the best examples of that, that assignment from her class. She probably put it in her senior portfolio as well. She's very talented. Okay, so here's our overview. Trying to ensure all students are appropriately challenged, but then they also have to be supported with appropriate interventions. Obviously, this has been an emotionally difficult year at the high school. It's been a reminder for us about what's important, and that's relationships we have with our students and with each other, and how we can hold each other up and endure tough times. Obviously, we're trying to increase our authentic learning opportunities and listen to student interests that are very dynamic. In the back of my head, you know, this is my seventh budget presentation year, and I know that the FinCom is going to ask the question, like, "How are our goals tied to our financial asks?" So I try to anticipate that with this slide. So you'll see that we're trying to increase our elective offerings this year. And of course, we're always trying to prepare kids for the complexity of the modern world. So I'd like to commend my colleague Amy's articulate comment about how difficult it is to make some of these budget decisions. And it's, it's never easy, but it's made easier if we always think about what student interests are and base our decisions solely on those things. It's never easy to tell someone when they don't have a job next year. So it's, it's been a challenging budget season, and as always, we're willing and able to make hard decisions in best interest of students. So that said, you'll see an increase in the undistributed line of 8,250 seats. That's for our VHS seats. So the way VHS structures its costs for schools is that we can get a discount if we have a teacher assigned to teach sections of classes for VHS. So we had a teacher who's been teaching VHS for us for a number of years, but at this point, her FTE has become more expensive than the discount we would have gotten from her teaching that class, if that makes sense. So rather than continue to pay that extra .2 FTE to that math teacher, we decided to just pay the per cost, the more expensive per cost, per seat cost for VHS, which actually ended up being a good savings for us. So you'll see the increase here, but there'll be a decrease in the math area coming up. So English Language Arts, we made the hard decision to decrease our English department by one staff member. You'll see here that that's the salary of the person, but in the budget book, you'll see it's line number 23056111. It actually says a reduction of $44,916. Obviously, that, that line takes up all the step and lane changes, the 4% cost of living increase. So even though the position was that much, it only offset the decrease by $44,916. There's the mathematics. You'll see a line 172305, reduce, there's the .2 FTE for VHS, and that amount was $20,681 savings. But again, the net that you're going to see in that line is $9,729 reduction. There's the, the middle school helped us out. Turns out that the year before, we actually subsidized the middle school, the .2. They were getting the benefit of Ms. Frost's expertise for that block of teaching on our dime. So it's going to the middle school. So it's Kathy McMahon, I'm sure she's watching this very riveting budget presentation, but a couple of years ago, she found in her budget page that Jamie Fremont Smith was, she was paying for him to teach to help out our big band. And so she said, "Aha, a high school has to pay part of his salary." So this little bit of turnaround is fair play for the middle school. Our tech instruction, we're really trying to bolster that program. If you haven't had a chance to go down to the shop with Mr. Sidmore at the helm, he was an English teacher for us, and now he's the tech ed engineering teacher down there in the shop. It looks like a different place. It reflects Tim's personality, very organized, very thoughtful. And we've got some new equipment there, and of course, the kids are excited about using this new router table, 3D router table. So we'd like to try to get some more raw materials for him to be able to use to help the kids really take off with those projects in tech ed and engineering. So in our continued, very close look at the budget, we decided to not have the dual enrollment class that was preparing kids for higher education. The original target group for the higher ed was first-generation college students, kids who maybe would not have thought about going to higher education, but it ended up not being totally true to that. And obviously, given the changes in the state community college system, where if you're, if you have a high school diploma, you can get free classes, one of the other reasons why we had this program is to try to reduce the financial impact of kids to continue higher education. But, but now with free community college courses for high school graduates, that, that impact has lessened. Also, we still have, I believe it's five classes offered to us through Salem State free. And then sometimes very involve students a lot of initiative, can write grants to try to get some more spots in, in community college and state colleges. Some of those students are in this room. Some of those students are in this room. Thank you, Charlie, it was great. And so, and the next thing with drama, if you remember the controversy a couple of years ago, we eliminated the during-the-day theater arts position at the high school because of lack of interest. So we wanted to take a step back, see what the impact would be on the after-school theater arts program, and it didn't have much of an impact on the theater arts program, if anything, the program, the productions have been fantastic, and it's caused some more interest in the students to say, "Whoa, maybe we should have some more theater arts during the day." Compound that with some students who said, "You know, I don't really, I'm not really into the personal fitness classes or the life, lifetime sports classes for junior and senior year. We wish we had some kind of alternative." So, we're looking to find a person, hopefully, who's got a theater arts background and can teach dance, to offer dance to our students in grades, it could be 10, 11, and 12.
Triple threat.
Or nine, eleven, nine, a triple threat, we're looking for a triple threat, yes. If they can sing, that'd be great, too.
Exactly.
So it could be a new elective PE class for freshmen, juniors, and seniors. So special education, probably the most complex part of our budget this year, appreciate Dr. Oxford is taking on a lot of the budget. The ESY program and a lot of the purchase services moved to central office. He also picked up a Coda salary for us for next year, so it looked like the hero, as Mr. Genofe said, with only the 1% increase, but a big part of that is because of that stuff moving to central office for the sake of efficiency. So, as well, as while we're talking about special ed, the FTEs, so we have the minus point one five for the Coda, we do have, we're picking up the remaining point nine out of the person who was previously paid through the IDEA grant, again, kind of like the offset, like central office took a big chunk of it, but also now we have to pay the full salary of a person who has previously paid nine tenths of his salary through IDEA, now we have to pick up that whole thing. And we're adding that therapeutic position that Dr. Oxford mentioned, so we're really up point seven five appropriated FTEs, just to be completely accurate, because of the moving over of the IDEA-funded position. And here's our enrollment. So you'll notice, we've projected for next year's ninth grade, 120, I know that the current eighth grade is 135, but we typically lose about 15 or so kids, is that pretty?
Yeah, between private schools.
To private schools or wittier. So, the senior class outgoing is 120-ish, incoming class is going to be about 120, so that's why we're expecting to be about the same size next year, that's why the class size doesn't change. I guess I'd be remiss if I didn't call this the Tom Slide. I think our special education salaries, I guess, that's, I think that's pretty common for special education salaries to be about 20% of a school's budget, so I think we're right in the ballpark there. And I'll entertain any questions.
Just want to give a quick shout-out, really appreciate the line item numbers that you've put in, this is super helpful. In terms of the reduction for the English Language Arts teacher, with the student body numbers staying the same, how does that impact instruction with the remaining teachers absorbing that?
So we looked at the, the class size for ELA, we're making this decision, and this year, the, the average class size for ELA is 14.1, I mean, 13.1. Next year, with one less staff, it would be 14.1. So obviously, it's, that's the average, right? So there's going to be some classes that are going to be, you know, maybe nine or 10, but then there could be other classes that are going to be 20, so.
Are there any loss of English electives because of that reduction?
So, the position that is being reduced, the teacher also taught, teaches intro to psych, so we'll have to see if, what the course requests look like for that, and maybe move those sections to somebody else who has a psych background. I have a couple of people in mind, if, if the course requests warrant those sections running.
Just point of clarification, isn't one of the, isn't there an elective being offered next year that actually expands the English? Is in short writing being added as a course next year?
We have added some electives to the program of studies, and as always, the student demand will drive the schedule, so if the new electives are, have a lot of interest, then those sections will run and other sections won't, so it's, it's the way it always works.
Just had a quick question on the 1.0 addition for theater arts dance PE. Does some of that have to do with the new standards as well, meeting the new standards?
Right, yeah, I mean, there are, dance standards have existed in the past, we just haven't ever had someone be able to teach them.
Okay. So I'm just, because the, the drama position that was reduced was a point four, so this would be electives predominantly?
Right, and so one of the issues when we had the part-time teachers, as the folks pointed out at the time, is that if they're only point four, that means there can only be two blocks when those classes could run, so it kind of limits the flexibility about when it could fit potentially into student schedules, so if we have someone who's there for more blocks, it could potentially run more sections based on it fitting into student schedules.
And is there the possibility that that position might also help out with the after-school drama productions? Because I've been wondering if that, I agree, the productions have been great the last two years, but I'm wondering if that is sustainable, who is currently running them, who does a lot of things.
Right, yeah, so, yeah.
Amazing.
Mr. Coelho is very talented, but he's only one person, and we, last time I checked, we can't clone anybody, so, yeah, obviously, we want to have someone who's got some, a dance background for the choreography for the musical, or maybe someone could even take over the direction of the musical.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
It's always good to be the presenter that starts at 10:00 PM, so I'm really looking forward to, to that, I'm sure you are, too, thank you. Okay, so I wanted to share a couple of sections. First, starting with the building, building operations, otherwise known as school facilities. We continue to, to, to take a tighter and tighter look at, you know, at, you know, at that, and are presenting a $47,000 reduced budget, about 2.0, you know, 2.09%. And there's a couple of reasons for that, we are seeing some increases, but we're also seeing some, some efficiencies that we've been able to make. A bit of a shout-out to, to the town manager and, and Dr. Blake for the reorganization of, of school and town facilities. I think some of those efficiencies have lent themselves to our capacity to control a little bit of our destinies, you know, a little bit, so, and I think there's some, some real benefit there. A couple notable increases is the anticipation of the increase in, in water and sewer rates. You all, as homeowners, are probably, you know, noticing the same effect. The utilities, the department has provided us with official notice on to expect a 7% increase in, in, in water and sewer. So that's, that is baked in to the, to the increase in building operations costs. This, this budget, as all, all budgets include the increases, the wage increases as negotiated with, with the APSME unit for school custodians. We are seeing, we've been able to realize some building maintenance reductions due to expected fewer needs with the new school roofs, the new roofs are only a year old, so we'll be going into year two of the new roofs. We have, I'm going to knock on wood somewhere, but we have, we have seen a notable drop in any sort of concerns. You know, this school year regarding leaks from, from the roof, we've got other facilities concerns, as you know, but, but we haven't seen any, you know, regarding other roofs. We've got new, new roofs and new roof structures on each of the three schools. So we're anticipating, we're able to cut back on what had been baked in to budgets just turning over year after year, putting, you know, Band-Aids on, on things. So we're anticipating a, be able to reduce some of the maintenance costs around about school roofs, as well as what I'm calling really investments that we've had to make by, by necessity, with some new school boilers this year and last year, as well as some HVAC improvements here in this building. Those are born out of, out of necessity, not out of a preconceived, you know, plan. The boilers shut down, as we know, you know, earlier in this year, we had boiler, significant boiler problems at the Doian, and to the tune of needing to actually significantly repair and replace, as well as HVAC improvements being made here in this building, particularly in the cafeteria area and in the kitchen areas. So we're anticipating being able, because of those investment, we've been, we're be able to cut back on necessities for some improvement, excuse me, some maintenance. We're pretty much, you know, level funding in other areas across the, across all buildings. One of the things that I will, I summarize a bit at the end, but the third, the second to last bullet, we are increasing our reliance on, on offsets from the EDP Extended Day Program and School Food Service Program, to continue to offset some of these reductions, particularly around water and sewer, and increase in, in electric rates. Electric rates aren't going up the way they did fiscal '25, or at least we've not received notice of that, but we are able to, in, in an appropriate and lawful way, be able to charge a utility cost for both of those programs, to be able to minimize the impact on, on increases in school facilities, and in this way, able to actually show a reduction in, in, in building operations. And, and the last bullet, excuse me, last bullet, also a, a reduction due to town, you know, reorganization, is we no longer have a full-time facilities director that is shared by the school department. We have a full-time person as, and without a sharing piece. So we had previously a 1.5, if you will, we had half of the town facilities director and a facilities assistant, who's now the interim facilities director, so we've really lost a point five in, in terms, in terms of paying a salary for, for, for a, you know, building facilities-level administrator. So, the good news there is we continue to, to tighten that. I think it's only fair to say that this does not show any sort of increase. Our adjustments made to the, to the custodial staff, our, our building, our, our building facility, interim facilities director has shared the same recommendation that we received last year about the need to increase the, the custodial staff in order to, in order to better support the buildings, with a very tight, you know, number of, of staff there. That isn't something that we were able to, to bring into the budget for at least now the second year in a row, but I think it's, it's important that that remains one of the things that needs to continue to be looked at, is the custodial needs of the buildings. So, that's pretty much the summary there. Does anyone have any questions regarding building operations? Okay. The district central office and district-wide budgets, walking through these, these bullets, we are seeing an overall recommended net increase of $527,704, which is about a 3.8, 3.83% increase. And these bullets are a pretty decent summary of all of the, of all of the work within the central office, you know, parts. The first thing I think it's more than fair to, to reflect is that all the collective bargaining agreements for all units have been, have been built into, into the budgets, built into both the fiscal '25 budget and built into the fiscal '26 budget. That is something that we, that we worked on, you know, collectively during negotiations, as well as obviously in the, in the, in the, in the recent weeks and months, being able to do that. I would also add, I think that's, that's a critical piece, that while, while the cost of labor, the cost of employment continues to drive probably the most significant increases in this budget of the cost of employment, that's not an unusual, this, we're not, that's not an aberration at all, the costs of labor and the cost of employment are significant, certainly in the 70-plus percent, you know, category of, of the cost of, of running the district. And I think, as it should be, right? We want to put in front of the most important thing we can spend money on are the people that we put in front of the students. And whether that's, whether that's, you know, you know, student-facing educators or support staff, I think, you know, compensating them well helps us to recruit and retain, you know, you know, well, you know, well-thought-of, you know, staff, and, and that are really impactful. So, just to summary, as we've, we've spent lots of time in the fall talking about what these were going to look like, but there's a 4% increase, 4% of cost of living increase across the, the unit A or the teacher salary schedule, a 4.5% increase for the, for the ESPs, average of 6.8 for the paraprofessionals, it's an average, because we have eight, we, excuse me, we have six columns within the paraschedule that people that are at different places, and it's a dollar-per-hour increase, it's not a flat percentage increase, so that's why paraprofessionals look a little different than everyone else when it comes to wage increases. 2.5% for custodians, 2% for clerical, and 2.5% for cafeteria workers, so all of those increases are, have been anticipated and built into closing fiscal '25 and opening '26. As Dr. Blake mentioned at the beginning, with some, some opening, you know, thoughts and sharing some increases in, in overall compensation, where especially talking about what some of the increases, particularly in, in the teacher bargaining group, there is an increase, overall increase of $794,000 for the cost of advancement through salary and wage schedules for all the groups. Half of that number, the $430,000, $432,000, I think that Dr. Blake mentioned, are the teacher group alone, and the other, the remaining, call it $300,000 or so, is everyone else. This, this $794,000 exists in one line in the central office budget called Salary Reserve. There's a couple of reasons for that, if we can certainly, I didn't say, we talked about that at some length last week at the, at the budget subcommittee meeting. The biggest reason for that is, is by the time we were building the budget, we didn't have all of the increases, we didn't have all of the requests for, for column movements in, and by the time that happened, which was January 15th, we were still sort of putting that, that together, that's certainly one, one reason. And, and the second reason, I wanted to, as much as possible, transparently show across all budgets and all lines where the 4% increase was. So we wanted, because that's the first year of, of a big number for the, for the teacher bargaining group, so as transparently as we can, I figured if we had a number that was, say, twice that or so, it wouldn't be as obvious where the 4% lied, so. But between the budget lines in all the schools and the central office Salary Reserve line, we, we are able to pay the, all employees next year and at the negotiated rates. Shout-out back to Dr. Oxford and team, because this is a, this is a huge lift. I was an observer, a participating observer in some ways, but nonetheless, an observer is seeing all of, all of the movement that was happening, but I think it's more than fair to say that the reorganization of staff to better align with both the unique and shared student needs and to provide more quality in district program. And I think that will, that, there will be an, an overall, you know, realization of some real, real potential, at least from, from the finance, you know, side of things, and I'm highly confident that that will complement the, the work needed. So the next bullet down isn't necessarily new, we've, we've been paying a piece of the towns, of the Climate Resiliency Manager and the DPW Facilities, our director to support those, those projects, which obviously the schools and school buildings are into. those, those projects, which obviously the schools and school buildings are intimately engaged in. So that isn't necessarily new. There are some increases in the IT technology budgets to, to do, that, that reflect a couple of different things. In fact, if you look at the overall IT budget, when we, when you get to those parts in the budget book itself, you're going to see somewhere around a 14% increase. And that, this is, is representative of a couple of things that are going on, one of which the principals talked about and, and Dr. Oxford talked about, as, as, as some, our reorganization of, of special education staffing was occurring and, and moving from a school budget to the central office budget, the same sort of thing was happening in many ways with regard to some of the technology and, and the, and the technology-based curriculums that the IT department here has to do an incredible job, and they do, do an incredible job to support. So some of those things are also occurring, and I know that Peter and, and John particularly, you know, highlighted where some movement is being, is being placed there. So the growth that's seen in the IT budget isn't necessarily growth of brand-new things that we haven't done before. It's really as much of a shifting of where the expense lies to appropriately be supported by the staff members that, that, that appropriately, you know, are best suited to support that work and engage the technology, engage the vendors and so forth. Also, it reflects a loss of the last year of ESER funds. We had, in the fiscal '25 budget, about $62,000 for the last, last dime of ESER. And, and all of ESER in fiscal '25 was, was spent through the, through the technology budget. So that, this is the last year that we're going to be making any sort of case around the fiscal cliff that we've known has been coming. And, and so that has also been built into that. And it's also fair to say, I think, shout out to Keith and his team, that we are not rolling in 100% of that $62,000. I think they took a pretty sharp pencil to come up with what we actually needed, what was being best used, or the some efficiencies around that. So not all of the lost ESER funds are coming into the IT budget, but, but certainly the lion's share of it is. I think it's maybe $52,000 or some, or thereabouts. Our professional development, I would certainly leave that to Dr. Wagner, but there is not a lot of growth there in the central office budget. Pretty much the growth there is being seen in the increased costs of, say, some of the stipends that, that teachers and teacher leaders are receiving for their work. We talked, there was lots of talk earlier of the compass. There is a line, if you wanted to see the stipend line in the central office budget, the first line under stipends is for compass work. So there are some increases there, and those are reflected through collective bargaining costs as well. Other than that, Dr. Wagner's work is pretty much, you know, not exclusively, but predominantly grant-funded. There are some appropriated budget requirements there as well. I think, you know, we talked about it, you know, earlier, but we're going to be able to see and rely on some reductions in out-of-district placements, meaning students not going out that could be better served, you know, in district. And that's, that's where the balancing act is. And that's where, that's where I know Dr. Oxford and the team and, and conversations that we've held have, have really kept that balance in play in order to present to you a higher FTE count. And I want, want us to be completely transparent. We are hiring a few more staff members and some reorganization, but we're, we're realizing the bulk of the Special Education Department's savings through a reduction in anticipated out-of-district placements and by increasing the use of the Circuit Breaker Revolving Fund. So that's, and I mentioned that earlier, when Eric Slid was up at the, at now like three days ago when he first spoke, no, a couple hours ago. I'm doing my best here on the, whatever, when Dr. Oxford spoke back in October. Anyway, so, but in all, in all, in all candor, so, so there was a piece there that I think has some, some real efficiencies, you know, you know, to it. But it is transparent. We need to know that we are increasing the number of FTEs without necessarily growing the budget dollar value proportionally. And I think that that will bear itself out nicely. There's an increase in 1.0, we talked about a couple of times tonight, for the literacy coach, that's coming from the pain grant into the appropriated budget. A couple of points that Dr. Blake mentioned, but here are three of them around fixed costs. Health insurance, we've probably beaten that to death, but it's not, it's going to come back. Because baked into this budget, the budget of a week ago, or thereabouts, two weeks ago, was, was a 10% increase. That's the number that we had been planning on since the town manager gave us that direction back in the fall. We've been talking about 10%, 10%. There was information that came out of this meeting back in January, that MMA, Annual MMA Meeting, held the third or fourth weekend in January, that anticipated growth between 10% and 20%. And without having any concrete numbers for Ipswich yet, we felt it best to, to grow that from our 10% to a 15%. So this budget can support a 15% increase in the cost of health insurance. If the number comes in higher than that, we're going to have to have a different, another conversation over the course of the, the spring. We should have that information if, according to what our, our insurance provider, Maya, has told us, we should have that before our March meeting with Finance Committee. We may have it before your vote on February 27. We, that's outside of our control when that, when we actually get those figures, but the rates typically come in middle of February, end of February. So I would hope we'd have them before that. So we'll certainly stay tuned there. But that's a, that's a budget driver for sure this year. We're offsetting the, the cost of, of the bulk of that growth, as Dr. Blake said at the, at the outset, with the, with the increased use of choice funds. And we have some pension and retirement obligations to our retirees, which continues to be, I think appropriately so, those that have served the district well for many years. Their, our responsibility is to continue to support their retirement needs and retirement benefits. We're, we've been told to plan on a 6.25% increase for the cost of, of supporting our retirees. The second year of the short-term debt on the roofs, maybe up here, I talked about, on the last slide, talked about, it's great that we have these new roofs, it's saving us money, but we now, we now are into the second year of paying, paying the bond for the, for the three new roofs. This will be, the last bullet here, this will be our last year for our current school transportation contract. So a year from now, we'll be out to bid with, for a, for our transportation bus contract. It expires in June of '26. And that's, but in, in the contract that we have for the, for the last year of this is a 3% increase across the cost of transportation. So we have one more year of known cost for transportation. And when we go into '27, we will have to go out to bid and we'll see obviously where that, where that takes us. But... So, before I do that, any, I didn't want to go fast, but I didn't want to go slow. Any, any cost or thoughts about the district-wide and central office budget highlights? Please?
I may have missed it because it's late. Of the Climate Resiliency Manager, we are continuing to share that with the town?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, we are. Yep. If you look on the budget slides, and I'm happy to obviously walk and talk through anything that you want in this, in the central office, but just calling particular attention to the Student Services budget lines is where you'll see a number of things, and I've, I've highlighted them purposely to call them out, where it says "new" in fiscal '26, sort of working off the left column. That won't necessarily appear in the, in the budget moving that you'll see when I do reports next year. But just to call your attention to it, it says "new" in '26. There's a variety of places on the, in the budget document, the spreadsheet document, that say "new" in '26. Some of those things are reflecting the new positions that Dr. Oxford talked about. Some of them are reflecting new expenses that previously were in schools that are now in the, in the central office, Student Services Budget. One of the things that I know, all three principals, or all four principals that spoke of tonight, was, was about ESY, the Extended School Year Summer Programming. That is now under the central office budget under, under Student Services. So those costs do not exist in the school budgets any longer and have been moved to the, to the central office. But, but, but another point on that is that between the, the four schools and the three places of budget, because remember the elementary budget for ESY was in, was in the Doian budget, wasn't in both places. It was, it was in one school that supported both, both, both buildings, right? But between the, the, the elementary budget and the middle school and the high school budget, we were spending about $210,000 a year on the ESY program. Or we were, excuse me, we were budgeting about $210,000 in the ESY program. Are we pulled that apart a bit? Have we looked through that? We're actually only spending, we're actually only spending about $140,000 to $150,000 of that. So we actually reduced, if you were to look at the fiscal '25 lines and added up ESY, it'll come to $200,000. And if you see now in one central location, transparently so, there are two lines at the very bottom of the, of the, of the section for Student Services that reflects the two parts, cost of personnel and cost of materials. And there's a, be about a $50, $55,000 reduction. So there's some, there's lots of efficiencies that we've, we've worked as we've tried to deliver a, a pretty tight, you know, a pretty tight budget.
Just before you leave that?
Oh yeah, of course.
You talk about the five additional FTE in special, special education, secretary and then for, this is therapist professional salary. Can you talk about those?
Sure. Might be easier for me to talk about the secretary and maybe bring Dr. Oxford up to, to plug in the difference. The secretary is, we're effectively, we're adding ours and picking up some shifted grant funds. So this, this person is already employed, you know, by us. It's just increasing the, the FTE for the work that she really is already doing, but just, we haven't really, you know, budgeted for that. We've been needing to, to cobble together funds throughout the, the third and fourth quarter of the year to make sure that we, that we keep her salary whole.
That's the one that's listed as .5 going up to 1.5?
No, well, okay. Well, we're actually, we're also, we're also adding a secretary in the Student Services Department. I guess that's what you meant. Sorry about that. My bad. So we're actually adding a full secretary to support. Two needs, one of which is early childhood work, early childhood. We talked about the coordinator, new early childhood coordinator at some, at some length. There's, we can't obviously have that program go unsupported from an administrative point of view with all of the, the moving parts there. And that, so that person is going to be doing part of, part of, part of that work and supporting one of the, one of the schools. Eric, you want to talk about the, the therapists and all the, all the moving parts there?
Yeah, absolutely. So as Tom had mentioned and what you did here throughout, you know, different parts of the presentation tonight, that, those are really reflected as new positions in the central budget that are, so for occupational therapy, physical therapy, coming from parsed out in the school-based budgets, just coming centrally. So those are coming out of the school-based budgets. So it's just really net neutral. There's one other position, it is noted as BCBA. That has been historically, the last several years, grant-funded in our, in our IDEA federal grant. That is absolutely a need, a continued need for our budget. We have two district-wide BCBAs. One's been in our appropriated central budget, one's been in that grant. We had our grants approved this year. I should have mentioned this earlier last October, three days ago, whoever it was. Our 240 grant every year, similar to FEFE's grant, similar to many other grants, if you continue, continually put the same positions in the grant year after year, it's kind of like, all right, enough, right? So we got our budget, our grant budget approved this year, but that was a soft warning, like, hey, start thinking about reallocating or doing something new with that. So that is really spread throughout all of what you heard tonight from the principals, why we've had to make a lot of movement in terms of allowable expenditures and costs in our grant. So as John mentioned, for example, at the high school, a big purchase services lines of $160,000 came from the, the high school budget that's going to come centrally. We're going to grant fund a ton of that, just because we got to, we got to change that. But as a substitution, so to speak, that 90% salary is going into the high school. So that's a similar narrative with the BCBA coming into the appropriated, and then we're going to reallocate some things into the grant, things like that. So.
Thank you.
All right, you got it.
Thank you. So this slide just shows what to expect in the next couple of months. Here we are tonight, February 5 and 6, maybe, or maybe not, I guess, not February 6. February 27 is the public hearing and the anticipated school committee vote. So the budget will be on the street, if you will, for three weeks, for the community to review and comment and, and share, and then obviously express themselves to you on February 27. I'm anticipating a tri-board meeting. I don't have a date for that. I don't know if it's out there yet, but I just put TBD, school committee vote on February 27. We do have hard dates for when we're presenting to the Town Finance Committee on March 11 and 12. And then we'll, the month, the rest of the month of March will be as they, as, as they call us back, I guess, to review and discuss. And then May 13, excuse me, is the town, is the town meeting. I wanted to fly back to do a summary pitch, if I might. Oops, too far back. Really just to call some attention to this, if you have this in your book, it doesn't appear well on the screen, but I think, hopefully it's, it's clear enough in your, in your books. This is probably going to be one of our talking points for, for the foreseeable future among, among all the, among all the pages. And I just wanted...
He just...
Oh, it's the second, second or third slide.
Or in the book.
Yeah.
It's right there.
One more.
Oh, okay.
Backwards.
Yes, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
So as Dr. Blake, you know, walked through this earlier, we're, we should be focusing on, on the, on the green, which is the budget that's being proposed and recommended to you this evening, comparing it against the two sort of salmon color columns for fiscal year '25, which is this year. There are two columns there, just to speak to and remind the group. The first column under fiscal '25 is the approved budget that was presented, you know, a year ago now, and then voted at town meeting. And I don't remember that number off the top of my head. And that's the budget that's $39,616,403. That's, that's where we were, you know, a year ago. And then in the, in the spring town meet, excuse me, in the fall town meeting, after the supplemental appropriation came through from additional Chapter 78, that number increased by approximately $231,000. So that's why the, the two columns that are salmon color are different. The first column being what spring town meeting did, the second column being what fall town meeting did. So that's why there's a difference there, just to highlight. We, we spent some time on this at the Budget Subcommittee Meeting last week, but I just wanted to call that out. So how are there two different numbers? And the difference is represented down the bottom here, on the bottom there, where it shows the three amounts and the bottom number being the additional appropriation of $231,000 from Chapter 78 that came into the town over the summer. So that's, that's, that's an important part there, if anyone's wondering why those fiscal '25 numbers are different. And so building off, building off fiscal '25 into, into fiscal '26, there are a couple of critical things to, to make a note of that I would be remiss if I didn't do. One is the anticipated, and these are both driven, and I know that one of our conversations, perhaps at our next meeting, whenever that is, tomorrow or next week, I, I know from direction given to us by the Budget Subcommittee, we need to spend some time on, on the budget and, and the override calculator. We need to spend the time anticipating what that is. We need to, we need to reflect upon the guidance provided to us pretty, pretty transparently last spring by town meeting, excuse me, by the town, by the Finance Committee with regard to what we can expect for town contribution every year, you know, year over year. They gave us a 4.5% anticipated growth from town contribution, how that is baked into this budget. And then the net becomes what we have to pull from the stabilization fund. That's, that's the essence of all of this. And that's, that's what this... And that's what this is based on, those two factors and two figures that are driven by those important conversations with finance committee on what we need to expect. How we get from, how we get down to a 4.29% budget with even some of the growth that has been really impressed upon us, as well as the type of things that we value as a community, that we, what do we want to spend our money on, is a value statement. The budget is a value statement. It may seem like a bunch of numbers on the page, but it really represents the values that the community wants to stand behind. And that's, but that is also, you know, driven here. How we are affording this, and it can't be understated, and I may sound like a broken record, certainly the administrative team's going to say he's a broken record, which is okay, I guess. We are becoming ever more reliant on revolving funds. That is demonstrable. We are becoming ever more reliant on school choice funds. We have to have a serious, just from my end of the aisle, conversation around school choice. We are increasing our capacity to draw down funds that are not being replenished. It's one thing if we charge appropriately and lawfully, so EDP and school food service. Those funds have a replenishment cycle, as long as the federal government continues to support and the state legislature continues to support school lunch at the levels that they have been, which is effectively free, reimbursement at 100%, I should say. But I would be remiss if I just didn't highlight, again, that we are becoming ever more reliant on sources of revolving funds. We're dipping into revolving funds as you see here, and that's why this slide needs to be as predominant as it is. It's like page four or five in the book. And it's the third slide that Dr. Blake talked about, and I'm sorry to be doing this at 10:40. But this, we need to spend time on this. This is where the rubber's going to meet the road about our capacity to afford the values that we share. You look at, I'm going to call out just a couple of big increases. There's a $50,000 increase to the EDP. There's a, this is a huge increase, up to $116,000 in the preschool revolving fund. Amy mentioned that during her remarks. These are affordable, I want to say that. These are sustainable because people contribute, continue to pay preschool tuition, right? So our reliance on that is sound, but it needs to be, you know, pointed out. The next big increase is in school food service, $100,000 growth there from $137,000 to $237,000. Also, sustainable and responsible, but it needs to be transparently said. The increase in, the $95,000 increase in school choice from $400,000 to $495,000, all of which we're anticipating to dedicate toward increasing health insurance to balance the health insurance cost on the appropriated budget, not certainly to reduce the cost of the service, but to reduce the cost built into the appropriated budget. And the next thing is to call out, is a huge increase in the Circuit Breaker, going from $395 to $565. That is the other way that we are showing the costs and the increases that are being, are necessitated to grow and support student services while using a reliable source of receivables. So that's an important piece to note there as well. One thing that I'll also point out on Circuit Breaker, is that Circuit Breaker, and Eric talked about the formula that drives that, and he was certainly spot on in describing it, but it's also going to be important to know, is we reduce our out-of-district costs, our capacity to get reimbursement for those costs will, of course, go down, right? So in the future, all the things that are happening in realigning Student Services and bringing positions into the central office from the schools and adding new positions to be able to support students till we can ultimately not have to send them out and provide them a better programming here in-house, that also is going to reduce our reimbursement into the future. So, sorry about all the bummer news at quarter of 11. But I just think it, we just need to be transparently so, and I would be remiss if I didn't, I guess, sort of end on that note. So, thank you. Any other, any questions on any of these, these things?
It just got me thinking about the Chapter 79, like, we have no way of anticipating, like, I remember having that conversation in the fall.
Right. It's possible, it depends on what the state, you know, revenues are, but we haven't received a consistent increase. The year before was $120,000, meaning fiscal '24, or $122,000 in fiscal, I think it was on this slide. Yeah, the, well, it wasn't on the slide, sorry about that. I think it was $122,000, the increase in fiscal '24, the increase in fiscal '25 was the $231,000. But there's no way to predict what the state revenues are going to be. The legislature won't even know until the summer, when all the bills are paid, or at least encumbered for the end of the fiscal year. So if we get a bump there, then that's a bonus, but...
What happens with the bonus?
So in this year, we baked it, which we would do every year, we baked it into, you know, the cost of administrating the schools. One of the things that I'm having, no, it's not sort of burying the headline, so no spoiler alert, but the $231,000, I've sort of been keeping, if you will, on a spreadsheet because we have to close fiscal year '25 with an $850,000 contribution to the stabilization fund, right? That's the other piece of the, of the moving parts within the finance committee's direction. So the $230,000 that we got in additional Chapter 78, I've been holding to the side to at least cover the first 230 of the 850.
Are you on track to return that 850 to the stabilization?
Yes, we are, yep. But lots of moving parts there, so that conversation needs to be, needs to be in the light of day. Maybe it's not great to be quarter of 11, but fair enough. Any other?
I have one quick question back to the winter budget that, Amy, you didn't have to get up here, but there was a couple of mines for professional salaries or classroom teachers that didn't have a 4% change on them, like, classroom teachers is like .98% change. So I'm assuming that's just some teachers maybe retiring? What's up? Sorry, page 50.
So there could be a net increase. It would be what the...
So I was expecting to see like a 4%.
But they may not be the same people.
...of teachers.
May not be the same individuals.
Okay. Okay, so there's a few of those.
Yep, and there will be. That will be the net, if there's a change. If we know someone's retiring, so for example, but we're replacing the position, we will build in a lower, like, someone's retiring at step 16, they're, you know, they're $103,000, we're going to replace them with a $70,000 or $67,000. So it'll be a net, but by and large, there's...
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I'm sorry, before we go to new business, a couple items just for our next meeting, not to cover this evening. Tom, can you provide us with the trending on the revolving accounts? So how much they increase year over year for the last few years, for whatever you have?
Sure, I can do that.
Can you provide the updated capital expense spreadsheet?
Yes, I anticipated that the second meeting would include the capital conversation.
Yeah, I'm sure we can see this ahead of time.
Oh, fair enough.
And, yes, those are my two.
Got it.
Do we have an announcement about a meeting date change?
I guess, this is new business.
Does anybody else have anything they want to request?
They can both do next Wednesday. Sasha and Kate, they got back to you or not?
Yes, and Haley. Yes, we're on to new business. And Jenny, you can do Wednesday?
Okay.
So, sounds like we will not have a meeting tomorrow night, it will in fact be next Wednesday. 12, okay, 7 o'clock here. New business.
I have one really quick, short new business. I'm making a, I was asked to make a guide for town meeting, and it was suggested to me that I ask the town committees if they want to have input on the guide. I don't really, I know we don't really do a lot with town meeting, but if, would you guys want input on that? It's mostly like norms for town meeting, like what moderator does, basic questions like that, but I just got like my final draft back today. I don't know if you guys want to have input.
Guide for who?
For seniors that are attending for the first time?
It's sort of, yeah, it's like for anybody who's new to town, seniors attending for the first time, it's like, what do you do at town meeting, what's it for, what is the town moderator? I didn't have a school committee section, just because we're not really integral to the function of town meeting, but it was suggested that I ask the three main boards. So I don't know if you want to have input on that, or if you care.
When is it due? When are you hoping to get it out?
Before springtime meeting, but I just, I was talking to town moderators, and they sent me back their revised version, so now I can send it out to the other meetings, and I can email that out to you guys, if you want to be part of that process.
I'd be open, like...
Okay, there's no like school committee section, but I didn't know if you... Yeah, I'll email that out.
Send it out to us, then maybe we can roll it on a meeting later.
Yeah.
Usually the FinCom booklet includes some information on that, that they mail to every household?
Like a one-page, like, 101 basic stuff.
Okay, cool.
Diana, can I actually just have one more thing for the next meeting? Can we earmark talking about the request or suggestion from FinCom to extend the last override an additional year and how that impacts everything?
Yeah.
Yep, absolutely.
Yeah, and I'm imagining this will happen anyways, but I think when we were talking about the override, we were like adding a year and this many years, like, if we can actually say in labeled the years, you know what I mean? We're all talking about the same thing.
One more budget question. Tom, can you clarify when the budget that was presented tonight is going to be uploaded to the website?
It'll be tomorrow.
It will be tomorrow?
Yeah.
Even with the offices?
Well, that's a good point, I didn't think of that, but probably, yeah, I would think so. Maybe, yeah.
If not tomorrow, by Friday?
Oh, absolutely, before the end of the week, yes. Not a question, yep.
Thank you.
It's currently in the school committee. But I'll move.
So moved.
Second. Jenny, all favor? At 10:52.
Thank you all.
What should we do now?
Thank you, everybody.
Already done.